I'd like to welcome everybody to the November tenth meeting of the New Bern Board of Aldermen. At this time, would you join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we just ask that you be with us tonight with a heavy heart as one is missing from us, a patriarch of New Bern, one Johnny Sampson. And Lord, you have shown us the light and surely as these are times that truly you try all of our citizens, we just ask for your continued presence and blessings as we do those things that would be favorable to our city and would be pleasing to you. And in your name we pray, amen. Would you join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag of our country? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Currie, would you call the roll?
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderwoman Harris.
Here.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey. Alderman Best.
Present.
Alderman Oden.
Here.
Okay, at this time, is everything good on the agenda or are there any changes?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we pull item number six and seven from the agenda. We're just not ready for it at this time.
Okay, is that your motion?
It is, sir.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye.
Are there any other changes to the agenda at this time?
Yes, Mayor Outlaw. At this time, I would ask that my fellow members of the Board of Aldermen join me in my motion to read a proclamation in memory and honor of Commissioner Johnny Sampson, who was a longtime supporter of this board, of the city. And at this time, I'd like to make that motion that we go ahead and read that proclamation at this time.
Second.
Motion, second is their discussion.
Mayor, I'd also like a roll call to have the record state that all of us, we did give it a formal vote.
Okay, at this time, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle, yes. Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Oden.
Yes.
Okay, point of order, we need to clarify the second on Alderman Astor's motion to pull items six and seven.
A second, Mayor.
That was a second from Alderman, is that okay, Madam Currie?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I think I'm gonna read this proclamation at this time. I would like to say in reading this, the many times I had the honor and pleasure of sitting in Ethel and Johnny Sampson's living room. A lot of things are going on in the city, a lot of discussion was in Johnny and Ethel's living room. And I remember one of the first visits to the Sampson home was after Hurricane, Mayor Bettis had just come into office. And we were riding around and, you know, went over and felt, always felt very comfortable. There was always plenty of food and plenty of fellowship and certainly plenty of family and loved ones there. And, you know, that was an example, I'm sure there'll be more of these things said in the next week, but that was an example of Hurricane. Mr. Sampson was, you might get him ninety percent satisfied, but he was never gonna be a hundred percent satisfied because he knew that we could always do more. And he, you know, always kept me up to the test at least. And I remember those discussions, I don't know if it ever happened in New Bern, but in the next day or so, Jeffrey, I don't think you were on the board, but we got all those pumps over there and got Duffy Field pumped out for the first time, having to go to railroad, I don't have right there Mr. Sampson's living room. So can't say enough about the family, but this time we'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas Johnny Sampson Jr., who was born in Craven County in nineteen thirty-three, was a man who cared about his neighbors and his community. And whereas, after working many years at the Navy, National Aviation Depot at Cherry Point and retiring from his position as a power support mechanic and training leader in nineteen ninety-one, Mr. Sampson was able to focus more his attention and efforts on the community that he truly loved. And whereas in December of nineteen ninety-six, Mr. Sampson was elected to serve the residents of Craven County on the Board of Commissioners. And he continued to serve in that capacity up until his death. And whereas service to his community was not limited to just his role as a county commissioner. Over the years, he was also a member of the TDA, the Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and he was involved in numerous civic organizations, including the Craven County Voters League, Concerned Citizens, the NAACP, and the Duffy Field Residents Council. And he also served as a deacon and in other capacities at Missionary Baptist Church. And in two thousand and three, Mr. Sampson received the order of the Lonely Pine Award in recognition of the contributions made to his community. And whereas Mr. Sampson was a frequent attendee at the New Bern Board of Aldermen meetings as he felt it important to stay abreast of the decisions being made in the city in which he not only lived and called home, but loved dearly. And now therefore, I thank Outlaw, Mayor of the City of New Bern, on behalf of the New Bern Board of Aldermen, to hereby proclaim and acknowledge Johnny Sampson Jr. was a civic and community-oriented person. And on behalf of the citizens of the City of New Bern, I extend to his family an expression of deep sympathy for their loss. And this, sign this today, affixed to seal the City of New Bern's tenth day of November in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty. And we will be giving this to the family on Friday. Other Aldermen, if you want to say anything at this time.
Mayor, I do wanna thank you and I'm sure let the citizens know that as you see our flags lowered, our city flag has been lowered in his memory and his honor. And I appreciate that being done. And, you know, we will be there paying our respects for him on Friday. And I just wanna thank the city for their cooperation with the family and the funeral director in providing the services that they need. So thank you, Mark and Chief Tucson, wherever you are, thank you for enabling the family to do what they needed to do.
Well, thank you for that. And I'll tell you, Sabrina, when I got the call, I really didn't know what to do. I mean, you know, this is kinda like, this is one of them big, big events that happens every so often. And, you know, they say in life, nobody's replaceable, but I don't know if that's true when it comes to Johnny. I think out of all the things I ever heard Johnny say, somewhere in his conversation, anywhere he was, he was gonna give it up to his Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, in any discussion. And so a man of that type faith is a true role model. And I'm sure that this kind of city will continue to live on, Johnny will certainly be living on as we conduct ourselves with the legacy that he's left us. Anything else on that before we get going? At this time, requests petitions of citizens. My classmate, Hazel Royal, you didn't think I saw it, you know, you didn't think I would know who was in that mask, did you? Us classmates, you know, we got that kinda thing going on there.
Is this turned around or?
Yes, ma'am, you're good. Just take to the mic, yes, ma'am. There you go.
Let me see if I can be heard. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Hazel Royal and I am the administrative pastor of Abundant Life Miracles Center. To the honorable Mayor Outlaw, my classmate, and the Board of Aldermen, I stand tonight on behalf of the faith community to request a one-year employment extension for Chief Tucson Summers of the New Bern Police Department. Even though Chief Summers has submitted his letter of retirement, he has consented to serve for the extended period of time. The reason that the citizens request this item is to safeguard and to continue the peace and unity and the community-police relationship that New Bern has been so blessed with during these turbulent times of social unrest and an ongoing pandemic. It is the belief of the faith community that introducing a new chief of police at this interval will prove to be disruptive to the tranquility for which our city has been distinguished. As you well know, for the past five years, Chief Summers has worked collaboratively with the faith community. He has worked with city leaders as well as concerned citizens to launch citywide initiatives that foster harmony and goodwill. This level of community engagement has been very successful in strengthening the community-police relationships. Consequently, the rapport that Chief Summers has established with citizens has produced peaceful outcomes during the recent local marches and demonstrations following the death of Mr. George Floyd. Therefore, we wholeheartedly believe this decision is in the best interest of our city as we continue to be challenged by threats and more impending perils. And whether these threats are true or false, the citizens of New Bern deserve the opportunity to feel safe and secure. Therefore, we would like the mayor and the Board of Aldermen to ask Chief Summers to extend his remarkable leadership for one more year as we continue to navigate forward. We thank you and we trust that the outcome will be favorable. While I'm still standing because Chief Summers is in the room, we would definitely like our city officials to know that we applaud his service to the city and whatever the outcome may be, that he is well-deserving of all the accolades that we could give him tonight, and certainly we thank you, Chief Summers. There are other pastors that are present tonight, if you would mind standing. Again, we represent the community of faith in our city. We talked with Mr. Mark Stevens recently. And now we move forward to talk with you, the Board of Aldermen and our mayor. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Reverend Luther Hill.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Protocol has already been established. Would you let me stand on the protocol that has been established? I would like to ditto all that has been said by Pastor Royal. And I would like to add this caveat, knowing that Chief has made some plans. We need your help in order for you to change the mind of a person who has made some plans. It's, it's good leverage if you can give him additional dollars to change his plans. And I hope that is within your purview. We would love for him to stay. In the Bible, it teaches us that when we see good of a person, it's great to speak good of a person. And I'm so thankful that I've had the opportunity to work with our chief as well as many of you. I can remember in the hurricane calling on Sister Bingle and the mayor. And it was probably getting well over into the evening, but they came. I can remember we wanted to set up a meeting with Brother Mark, a biblical scholar, he showed, while meeting with us. And he did not act as if it were a burden, he came to meet with us. There are others on the board that I've had a chance to rub shoulders with. I actually hunt on Sister Best's land. Yet, I'm grateful that our chief would avail himself to come and be with us, not just when an election comes about, but he'll show up anytime. Just recently, I called upon him to play a part in our presiding elders' appreciation service. And although he was out of town, he availed himself and gave comments over Zoom. It's a unique thing that a chief would understand all sides of situations. Talking about refunding, reallocating monies from the police department, he puts things in proper perspective. He understands that they need all the money that they can get, but they also need all of the training that they can get. And he has been inclusive in helping to train his officers with a sensitivity that is both one of professionalism and inclusiveness. So we are grateful for that. And if you all would please help us and remind us that we can work together with all aspects of the city by asking our chief to come back, we really would appreciate it. Thank you so very much. We pray with you as you mourn the death of one of your Aldermen. And we pray with you also as some of your loved ones have been affected by COVID. God bless you and keep you is our prayer, amen.
Thank you, thank you.
Reverend John Pierce.
Protocol having been established, I won't say much, but this, there's two words floating around in the atmosphere right now, and that's peace and unity. I've been a pastor, pastor of St. John Missionary Baptist Church here in New Bern for about twenty-six years. I've also been a part of the New Bern Ministry Alliance just about all that time. At one point, being the leader of their alliance. The chief came into the city and has been able to do what even the church has not been able to do. He rallied the churches together, he rallied the members together, he rallied the city together. He is indeed an agent of peace and agent of unity. So it would behoove, it would behoove us to encourage him, to almost insist that he remain with us during this transition such that the spirit and anointing upon him can be transferred to his successor. So I ask that you would consider that, amen.
Thank you, John. Reverend Tom Tully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, distinguished Alderman. I stand here, this is a joke I shared a year ago at a great event that we had, but I can't resist it because it's November and November starts with All Saints Day. And so Chief Tucson, Summers, Tucson, being All Saints Day, All Saints. I am afraid that I have to stand here and say, I don't know if Chief Summers is a saint, but he's a real good police chief. And if we can keep him longer, that's the obvious thing to do. If he were one of the candidates, the applicants for the job, he would be so head and shoulders above any other applicant who's got a learning curve to get here. And he's already here, he's already ours, and he's already been good to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Father.
Kevin Yates. Reeds Across America, Kevin, thanks for all you're doing on that.
Mayor Alderman, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak about Reeds Across America. I know many of you know what Reeds Across America is, but for the benefit of everyone here, I prepared a brief. Up until a few weeks ago, we didn't even know if Reeds Across America was gonna be allowed to happen this year through the National Cemetery Administration. And Reeds Across America, we were able to come up with a compromise. And I'll discuss that here in the brief. The New Bern National Cemetery is the largest national cemetery in the state of North Carolina in the terms of the number of headstones. Six thousand seven hundred seventy-two of those headstones are right here in New Bern, many of them from the Civil War, Battle of New Bern and the other skirmishes that happened around eastern North Carolina. We have over seven thousand five hundred interments here. So we're not the largest cemetery in terms of size or interments, but it's the number of headstones is what makes us special and what makes us so important. This is our eleventh year that we're participating in Reeds Across America. That first started in two thousand and ten, very humble beginnings. A few volunteers came out and placed a hundred wreaths. Each year, we've grown incrementally up to where we are now, although it's still entirely volunteer. I will argue with anyone that Reeds Across America is one of those incredible programs that brings about every demographic to come out and participate. So a regular non-COVID year, this is what it typically looks like. We have hundreds, literally hundreds of people that come out and wanna help with Reeds Across America from every group, Boy Scouts, teenagers, veterans, you name it. Everybody's out there and wants to participate. Something that we added a few years ago to speak more to Chief Summers and Chief Boyd here was the truck escort. That was something new that we created, again, trying to make it more of a community event. What we do is when these wreaths come in from Maine on these semi-tractor trailer trucks, we go out and we meet these trucks and we escort them into New Bern because they're bringing the wreaths here to our veterans at our national cemetery. With the help of New Bern PD, New Bern Fire Department, Craven County Sheriff's E and J, car clubs, motorcycle clubs, you name it, we all go out there and bring these truckers in. And last year, we presented them with challenge coins from the fire department and the police department and really just, you know, just really make these truckers that come in here and really feel special because they are, they're bringing all these wreaths in here. This year, I talked a little bit about COVID-19 and why it's gonna look a little different. We're gonna be restricted to fifty volunteers in the cemetery at a time. Even though it's an outdoor event, again, this was a blanket policy from the National Cemetery Administration. We will require face masks that would be worn inside the cemetery and we will have social distancing. This ceremony will not be what we're typically accustomed to. It will be a virtual-only ceremony that will be broadcast via social media. It will be at eight o'clock that morning on December nineteenth. And although it is gonna be very limited attendance, VIPs are encouraged, hint, hint. In fact, County Commissioner Mitchell here has already reserved her spot. So challenge accepted for those that want to also be there. And the last thing I wanted to talk about real quick is the wreath cleanup. This is another aspect that we added that a lot of people don't think about. Everybody wants to come out and place the wreaths, but you don't really realize how much people wanna come out and help clean up the wreaths. So this year, it'll be January twenty-third, and it is just as popular. I'm telling you, we have hundreds of people that come out there with their broomsticks and their wheelbarrows, and they come out and they help us pick up every single one of those wreaths and discard them. And that's what I'm asking for today, every now and then, I'm asking for dumpsters. I don't need buses, I don't need police officers, I need dumpsters. Thank you for your time.
How many dumpsters do you need?
Two, Mayor.
Two. Pam Woods.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I have an issue that I've sat here and I've thought about. I sincerely do not want to put a damper on the evening. Evening started out very well, proclamation, great words about Commissioner Sampson and what he's done. He has been a mentor to me. I see on the agenda, you have all these uplifting things. So I'm not gonna prolong what I came here to talk about, okay? I'm going, I have already distributed the letter to the mayor and all members of the Board of Aldermen. The issue is about the treatment of Alderwoman Harris, how she's been treated on Facebook and different avenues and different venues. You all are, we all are aware of this issue. I received an email about it in August of last year, that it was beginning to happen. So we know that from time to time, these things have happened. All I am actually here to ask you this evening is to acknowledge that there is a problem and to find a method of working on this problem. We all go on Facebook, we all make comments on Facebook, and we all know about the energy of Alderwoman Harris. When there's an issue, she's the first one, she's gonna, she ran through hurricane waters to take care of people, to help people. When there's an issue, she's gonna speak on the issue. She protested with us, she's done a number of things for the community, whether it was in her ward or not. So to allow her to continuously be maligned, harassed, is not, is not fair anyway. I wouldn't want anybody in my family to be treated that way. And I'm sure in anyone's individual family, you wouldn't allow that to happen in your individual family. But she's a member of our family in the city. So I would like for you to take my words and the words of my letter, I'm not even gonna go into the words of my letter, but I would like you to read it and come up with some course of action. On behalf of NAACP, I would be glad to meet with you and talk about this issue at then. Tonight is just not the night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, we pulled items six and seven from the consent agenda. I'm not, Madam Currie, we did not approve the consent agenda, we just removed those on our motion. So at this time, we would, I'd ask for approval of the consent agenda.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus items number six and seven.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. See, and then all opposed, motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Let's go to item number ten.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number ten is a presentation of canine vests. Tonight, we have the chief and his staff here. They're going to give a quick presentation. And we also have County Commissioner ET Mitchell and her husband Champ Mitchell, who were the donors for the canine vest, here with us in attendance to present them. So at this time, I'll turn it over to chief and his staff for the presentation.
Good evening. First, I'd like to say I'm extremely humbled by some of the comments that were made today. Obviously, you know that none of this could have happened without those men and women back at the police department, that they're the ones that actually go out and do all the great things that you heard about. And to have a community that's willing to work along and partner with us to try new things, still saying, ah, we've never done it that way before, we're not gonna do it that way. But to, to welcome new ideas and welcome to be a part of it, I think that's what makes the City of New Bern such a great place to live, work, and visit. So at this time, this is another example of how our community partners with us. Mr. and Mrs. Mitchell, Commissioner Mitchell, has graciously offered to buy vests for our canine dogs. All our canine vests were expiring. So we have some visitors that are gonna come in as we... as we ask Mr. and Mrs. Mitchell to come forth and make their presentation. Once our guests come in, just a minute, they're here. I guess they're putting on the best.
Let me say first something about Chief Summers. In some ways, I know him better than most of you because I've lived in two cities that, where he was the chief of police. And they're very different communities. One is a definite upper-middle-class community that was predominantly white, and we have a very different community here. So when Tucson came down, I wasn't sure if he understood what he was getting into, but I should have known better. He has done a marvelous job, and I would join with everybody here in wishing he would stay on. Although I have to acknowledge, he's earned the right to do something else with his life. Forty-four years of policing is tough, but Chief, you're one of the reasons that we support the police the way we do because it's very worthwhile under your leadership. You built a great department. And ET and I care greatly about the safety of all our law enforcement officers, whether they have two legs or four. But we have sort of a special affinity towards the dogs, and we wanted to do a little something to make sure that they were safe as we could make them. So that's it.
I'm still waiting. I told Chief Summers that no dogs, no vests. So the presentation's not done until I see some dog wearing some vest with it. But I would like to thank Chief Summers and also the police department and the community for being willing to modernize and professionalize law enforcement. And I think the fact that our community has marched and protested and brought its opinions publicly, peacefully during the last nine months, says a lot about the police department and the relationship with the police with our community. So thank you for everyone, not just the police department, but also for the community and the faith community who work so closely with them. This is the place where it all comes together, and we've seen the benefit of it ever since last spring. So thank you. I join with my husband in saying, "I hope you stay. I also know you deserve a rest and wear my dogs."
And to show you how well-trained there are, two alpha male dogs together, and they're not, I shouldn't say it, not fighting. But they're that. So that's, that's a great testament to the officers and the way that they train their animals. Would you, would you canine officers like to say a word?
There's another secret. I learned to walk on German shepherds, and so did my son by holding on to them. Of course, it's also mainly we were walking before we were a year old, and my parents did not appreciate it, nor did I. But they are wonderful animals. Thank you. Thanks for the work. So thanks.
Excuse me, excuse me, Commissioner. Can you move it out so I can see the vest? I can't really see the vest.
Oh, okay. New clothes.
I would like to also know. Chief, what, what are the dogs trained to do?
I'll let you tell you.
Mr. Taylor, would you explain what the dogs are trained to do?
Sit on the furniture.
Come to the microphone, yeah.
So we do primarily, most of our job is narcotics. We take drugs off the street. We do tracking and trailing, evidence search, building search, and then we also do apprehension work.
And how, how long has that dog, have you had that dog?
I've had him since twenty sixteen.
Okay. Is yours trained to do the same thing?
Yes, sir.
Yes, all four of our dogs are patrol dogs. That's what we consider them.
Great. Well, you guys do a wonderful job. Thank you so much for your service. And ET and Champ, thank you so much for, for the purchase of the vest.
Generous donation, thank you.
Our pleasure.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, in keeping with the spirit of the policing theme, Alderman Mitchell, when she was here, she was very adamant on us working on the police simulator. And while you're here, I haven't had a chance to tell you, but Carolina East Medical Center has made a gracious donation of fifty thousand dollars toward the cost of that, so that helps offset the cost that the city has to put forth. So thank you for your efforts with that.
Well, thank you, and also since I know that Public Works is well along the rehab of the building on the campus for the port, I'm looking forward to it being inaugurated in spring of this year. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
First things, let's go to item number eleven.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eleven is a presentation on Rebuild NC program. Niamishina Burns, External Relations Liaison with the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resilience, is with us tonight to make a virtual presentation on Rebuild NC Homeowner Recovery Program. This program provides assistance to repair, reconstruct, replace, or elevate homes, or reimburse homeowners for completed repairs related to damages sustained during Hurricanes Florence and Matthew. So at this point, I'm going to kind of, I guess I'm going to turn it over to Colleen, who's going to facilitate the digital Zoom meeting. So I will turn it over to Ms. Burns at this time.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Niamishina Burns, and I'm an External Relations Manager with the North Carolina Department of Public Safety, North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resilience. And I will not be presenting tonight. I'm going to leave that awesome duty up to my chief, the executive, Haley Pfeiffer-Hayne. And she's going to talk to you all tonight about our home buys program and our whole program. Haley?
Thank you so much for that introduction, Niamishina. As she said, my name is Haley Pfeiffer-Haynes, and I'm trying to share my screen. Can you see my screen now?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, great. Well, I'm very pleased to be here with you all to talk to you about our programs at INCOR. First, I'm going to give you a little bit of an overview of INCOR, and then talk about a few of our programs, as well as some that are upcoming. And then I'll be ready for questions that you may have as a result of my presentation. So in the wake of Hurricane Florence, Governor Cooper established our office to lead the state's efforts in rebuilding Florida stronger after hurricanes. We manage the HUD funds, which are community development block grants for disaster recovery, and community development block grants for mitigation, which are both focused on helping people who have low and moderate income recover long-term hurricanes. We also manage the grants and loan program for our local and tribal governments, which cash flows local government projects so that reimbursement programs like FEMA programs don't have to be cash flow by locality. And of course, we do have a resiliency mission. So we have one of the few state chief resiliency officers, Dr. Jess Whitehead. Are you not seeing my PowerPoint?
No.
Haley, what we're seeing right now is a Word document, so.
Oh, okay, let me try that again. I'm sorry.
And Colleen, I don't, I could be wrong. Maybe if y'all had jaws on you, we wouldn't hear the echo off of it. There we go.
Okay, sorry about that, guys. It doesn't seem like it's a normal day unless I have some kind of technical difficulty during a virtual meeting. So I feel like the day is complete now, since I've had one. Anyway, getting back to what I was saying, we also have a resiliency mission, and that is to really focus on how we can build back stronger and safer so that when future storms come, we don't have the levels of disaster and devastation that North Carolina has been experiencing. Recently, our resiliency team published the Natural Hazards Resilience Guide, and that's for local North Carolina communities to think about how they can start planning resiliency into their work. The first program I want to talk about is one of our major programs that we are, right now, in the process of accepting applications for, and that is the Homeowner Recovery Program. The Homeowner Recovery Program provides assistance to repair, reconstruct, or elevate homes that were damaged by Hurricane Florence or Matthew or both. To be eligible for that program, you should own a home that was damaged by either or both of those hurricanes, have occupied that house as your primary residence at the time of the storm, and continue to own it through project completion. You must be lawfully present in the United States and have legal authority to enter into a funding award with our agency and be willing to give program staff, inspectors, contractors, access to the damaged property. Excuse me. One of the eligibility considerations is income. And so it is limited to people who are, make less than a hundred and fifty percent of the area median income. So for Craven County, that would be, for a family of four, it would be a family earning ninety-five thousand three hundred and ten dollars or less per year, and those would qualify. A lot of the program is aimed at lower to moderate income folks, so that's people who earn eighty percent of AMI. But we do limit it at, we still do help people above that eighty percent point, but it's limited to those who make a hundred and fifty percent of area median income. And we had a previous application period that was opened following the Matthew funding becoming available. If people have applied under that and have not yet received assistance, they don't need to reapply. We are still considering those applications. One of the questions we get often is whether a homeowner can apply for the program if they've received funding from a different grant program, and the answer for that is yes. Receiving assistance from another program does not bar you from applying from, from this program and getting assistance, as long as you still have unmet need. What homeowners will need to do is be sure to disclose that information on their application so that can be taken into consideration and we can handle it appropriately according to what the federal guidelines say. So this next slide shows a map of the most impacted and distressed counties as determined by HUD. For Florence, Matthew, and you'll see there's a couple of those that are most impacted and distressed for both Matthew and Florence. And of course, Craven County is most impacted and distressed for Florence. And a lot of, what, what that's, what that means is, and you all know this, I don't need to tell you, but that you were severely affected in the storm, and so we expect a lot of applications to come from Craven County. So since New Bern is within Craven County, it's part of a Florence most impacted and distressed county. For Phase One, there were thirteen applicants from New Bern, and there's been about six hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars committed to helping those applicants. We did seek and, and were granted new flexibility by HUD that allows us to tie back to either storm, which allows some applicants who've had problems with escrow to resolve those. So far, in our, we, we opened applications for Phase Two of the Homeowner Recovery Program, June fifteenth, and so far, we've had eighty-five households from New Bern apply. Because there was COVID, we were not able to open centers for applications as we had intended and wanted to. So we did create an online application, and that's where these applications are largely coming from, is, is from that online application. But recently, we have been able to open our centers for curbside drop-off and pickup of documents by appointment. So for instance, if someone has applied to rebuild for Homeowner Recovery, but they haven't been able to get their documents in, or they have been reluctant to send some of these, you know, very sensitive, important documents through the mail or over the internet, they can now make an appointment by calling eight-three-three Ask RBC to make that appointment to come to the New Bern Center. And someone comes, one of our staff comes out curbside, picks up the documents, takes them inside, scans them, and then returns them, all while adhering to COVID guidelines of wearing a mask and keeping a social distance. So definitely wanted to make you aware of that. We were hoping we could be open for actually helping people, you know, fill out their applications, but we're just not there yet, and with the numbers that the governor talked about today, I don't know that we'll be doing that anytime soon. But we are eager to be able to do that because we know sometimes people just need to sit down across the desk from somebody and have them help, you know, get real help right there, talking through things so that they can fill out, it's, it, you know, it's a pretty complex application. They ask, fed, ask for a lot of documentation. And so we do want to help people as much as, as we can get the assistance that they so badly need. So I mentioned before, there are several ways to apply. You can apply online. And that application is available at the web address there, which is rebuild.nc.gov forward slash, forward slash HRP. You can also print out applications and the required forms and mail those in or drop them off at the center. And you can make a virtual appointment so that you could get over-the-phone help with filling out your application. They can't fill it out for you, but, you know, if you've got a printed-out application, they can provide you assistance in really getting that application filled out. Another program that I wanted to talk to you about is the Strategic Buyout Program. This provides eligible property owners located in areas that are prone to repeated flooding, the opportunity to relocate to safer land. And this is how it works. For the local government, our program works with your local government to identify areas where the greatest risk of damage from future hurricanes and flooding could occur. And right now, our staff is actually working with your Economic and Community Development Manager, Amanda Olinson, to identify the appropriate zones because we know that there are very likely some in New Bern. And then for residents, it's a voluntary process for them. They, if they live in a buyout zone, they're offered a voluntary buyout award to allow them to move to a safer place that is at low risk of flooding. All structures are removed from the land once they are bought out, and there's a restrictive covenant placed on the deed that assures the homeowner that their property will not be redeveloped or another, someone else will live there. It, it will have to. It, it will have to remain free of all the permanent structures, uh, once it is bought out. We have another program coming soon, early in 2021, uh, the Small Rental Repair Program, uh, and that's for landlords who own year-round rental property that was damaged by Hurricane Matthew or Florence, to assist them to return those rental structures to rentable shape. And you qualify by having remaining repairs on the property needed of at least $5,000 or more to make the property ready for renters to protect and, and to protect against future storms. And the idea there is, uh, if, if we do help that landlord get the property back into shape, they do have to agree to keep it in an affordable, um, rental arrangement for a number of years, so that, the idea being that we want to maintain affordable housing stock in communities. I want to turn to a different program that you may have heard about more recently as a result of the coronavirus. So on October 15th, uh, our office opened the HOPE Program, which is the Housing Opportunities and Prevention of Evictions Program, which is a statewide initiative to provide rent and utility assistance to eligible low and moderate income renters that are experiencing financial hardship due to economic effects of COVID-19. And the idea here is, by providing rent and utility assistance, we promote housing stability during the ongoing pandemic. It prevents people from having to double up with family, or God forbid, become homeless. The rent assistance can be up to six months of funding, and at least one month has to be past due. So, what we are seeing is, a lot of folks are a couple of months past due, they're not a full six months past due. And in that case, we will pay the past due rent, and say they're two months past due, we'll pay four months in the future. And so that really promotes that housing stability through, through, um, through the pandemic. In terms of utility assistance, we provide up to six months, uh, for past due essential utilities. That includes electricity, water, gas, sewer, propane, natural gas, those sorts of things. And I wanted to update you a little bit on your Craven County. I can't, I wasn't able to, we don't have it drilled down by municipality, but I can tell you for the, all of Craven County, you'll see there, it was 338 when I prepared this slide deck, um, last week, and now it's up to 393 applicants from Craven County. And we did just announce today that we are closing applications tomorrow due to our funding being fully committed. So, if you know of anyone who needs rent or utility assistance, and is low to moderate income, anyone who's struggling, please, we want to urge you to get them on, the best way to apply is on our website, and I regret, I don't have that up here, but it's, it's, we are, um, working with 211, and it's on their website, so that web address would be nc211.org/HOPE. They can also call 211, but we know that the wait times have been very long, and there are no wait times if you go online to fill out that application. It's fairly simple, um, much simpler than applying for what rebuild, the, some of the homeowner recovery programs. You'll, they'll need to provide some, uh, income information as well as information about their rental situation and their past due utilities. But we want to encourage everyone who needs that assistance to go ahead and apply by 6:00 PM tomorrow evening. So at INCOR, we are committed to recovery. We're trying to help people build back smarter and stronger. We're trying to help people stay in their homes during the pandemic, and, um, we're working very hard to make sure that our fellow North Carolinians are served during this very trying time, and I am available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, um, this is Alderman Barbara Best, and I just want to thank you ladies, um, for taking the time out to do this presentation for us. Ms. Burns, I spoke with you on the phone, and, um, I do have a couple of questions. If you previously applied for this program and you were ineligible for assistance, can you reapply? No, I'm not talking about the HOPE program, the rebuild, the Homeowners Program.
Rebuild. I would, um, so we are actually reconsidering those who have been found to be ineligible given some of our new, um, flexibilities that HUD has given us. So if you've already applied and been found ineligible, we are reexamining those applications.
So, for the Homeowners Program is concerned, when will you stop taking applications on that? Or, do you have a deadline?
No, we don't, um, we, we are leaving that open-ended. We are encouraging people to go ahead and apply because we really want to start working on their applications and get them, getting them, you know, reestablished. But, right now, there is no prospect of closing those applications.
Well, thank you.
I have a question, um, this is Alderman Bingle. Uh, thank you again for being here, but we had a list of, and Alderman Best, you might be able to help me. I don't know, was it maybe 50 homes, 40, 50 homes that applied for buyout? Of only a minimal amount, maybe, you know, less than 10 were chosen. What happens to the rest of those homes? Because they said there weren't funds. Can they now be relooked at?
So, that probably was through HMGP, the Hazard Mitigation, something.
Yes, the Form 7 Hazard Mitigation Grant.
Which is, um, administered by our sister agency, Emergency Management. Our Strategic Buyout Program is separate from that, and, um, we will certainly, one of the things that they do look at is any HMGP zones, certainly ones that have not been funded. So, I, I think that that, it's safe to say those things will be in consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions forward? Well, thank you so much for this information.
Thank you. Yes, thank you again.
Thank you very much for having us.
Okay, there are no more questions, good item number 12.
Thank you, Mayor, um, item number 12 is a presentation by Habitat for Humanity of Craven County. Uh, tonight we have with us the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity, Mr. Williams. He is here and is going to provide the board a presentation on highlighting some of the homes that's been constructed on the lots that were donated by the city over the past couple of years. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Williams for his presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to thank you, um, so for the next 35 minutes, we're going to. Mark Brenda told me that I should say that. I know it's only 10, but she told me to tell you it was 35, just to see the look on your face. So, Mayor Outlaw, Board of Alderman, Alderman Harris, I know you're out there somewhere. I'm here to thank you and also give you an idea of the impact that the work that, that we've done, and we's not just us, but all of us, that we've done here in New Bern, okay? So with that, and I really want you to really listen, um, because, um, I wanted to show you the impact of just seven homes, just seven homes that we've done over the past few years and what that, that is. So, back in March of 2016, um, the city conveyed, um, nine vacant lots, the city-owned lots, to Habitat for Humanity. And they were, those are them. We had two over on Third Avenue, I got three of them on West Street, North Burn Street, Howard Church Street, and Burn Street. We took those nine lots, um, and those nine lots have produced seven homes, um, in, in New Bern. Actually, they're all in the greater Duffy Field area. And we've invested $541,000 in actually creating those seven homes. So, over half a million dollars invested in, in creating those seven homes. Now, the economic impact that we've made on our community by doing that, depending on, on which economist you listen to, for every dollar that we spent, that was another five to eight dollars in economic impact. So that means that we had to buy lumber, we had to buy HVAC systems, we had to, uh, get an electrician and so forth. Those electricians had to hire people, so we, we basically are creating jobs. Those people are getting paid, they're spending money. So the impact on our community from just that half million dollars is between 2.7 and 3.4 million dollars. And that's just from donating nine vacant lots to Habitat for Humanity and us going ahead and, and building those homes. Not only that, but those seven homes that we built, um, represents $755,000 in property value. So that's an increase in property value in that community where values, I don't have to tell you, have been going down. So, we've actually brought values up by adding 3/4 of a million dollars in property value to that community. Those properties also are generating, um, tax revenue for both the city and the county. So we, we're on an annual basis, that's six, six mil, I wish it was six million, $6,600 annually. Now, if we can continue on that path, if we can continue developing, that's more tax revenue, that's more economic impact that we're going to have on a specific area that is the focus of the community, actually of the city, and actually bringing that community back. But we didn't do it by ourselves, um, and we will never say that we did it by ourselves. We could not have done this without, without all of our partners. We've had, uh, the State Employees Credit Union actually sponsored an entire build, um, for us. We've had Wells Fargo, Bosch, K-HAC, uh, even the city of New Bern, with the Community Development Block Grant, contributed to, um, the investments that we were making in this community, um, International Paper Moin and so forth. And a lot of our banking partners, because in helping our, our homeowners become homeowners, we actually invest a lot in education because we do want to make sure we have successful homeowners. So our, our friends at PNC, First Flight Credit Union, Craven Community College, Navy Federal, BB, well, Truist now, uh, are all partners that help us with, with educating our families so that they get the life skills and so forth, so that they're able to be successful homeowners. And then the faith community, um, a lot of them aren't here, but First Prez, um, Centenary, um, Christ Episcopal, First Baptist have always been there for us, supporting us financially as we try and, and bring families into homeownership, uh, here in, in New Bern. But, most important impact, of course, is the people, um, and that's really what we're doing. We are, have eight, 11 adults and 12 children are being impacted by these seven homes. And those kids are attending JT Barber Elementary School. They're, they're attending HJ McDonald, uh, Middle School. So, and we know, or at least I know, that JT Barber's been declining in student population. We're actually adding back to the student population in that school and HJ McDonald. And those kids actually have a good home, safe home. They have someplace where they can study, they can feel safe, and they absolutely are going to be successful students. Oh, and by the way, um, a lot of the homeowners that, that we have, have, have impacted are here. So a few stand up, I lost a couple of them. But these, these are real impacts that, that the city makes by making the, the contributions to us, and they're here along with me just to say thank you for helping them realize their dreams and getting their families into safe and decent housing. And that's really why we do what we do. And not only that, but these families, they're, they're also working with a lot of our, our vendors, our vendors, our companies around, Harris Teeter, Food Lion, Bosch. They are actually employees of these places. So those employers have employees that are not going to miss work because of illness or because they have no place to go and so forth. So, the impacts are, are even greater than, than just the families. And now I need to put together a, put to death anyway, this vicious rumor that Habitat's not doing much in the, the greater Duffy Field area. We are not leaving Duffy Field. It is our focus area. We will be here until, we're going to always be here, and Duffy Field is going to be our focus area. We are bringing our neighborhood revitalization efforts there. We're going to partner like it's 1999 with the Redevelopment Commission until we actually have that, that community completely revitalized. You won't recognize it soon. And we're also going to continue moving. We're, we, thanks to, um, the, the conveyance of lots over in the Pembroke community, we're starting to build there, and we will continue building there. We will spread out from here and get into Havlock and Vance Bar, and we will continue going. We are looking forward to the continued partnership with you. So, with that, I just want to say one last time, thank you. Any questions?
Well, not a question, but a comment. First of all, you know, I've, I've been involved with Habitat for many years, and, Mike, I have to say, I'm not just blowing hot air. When you set foot in this town, you took Habitat to another dimension. And I just want to thank you because instead of one house a year, we're seeing one a month, or one every other month. And that's the difference that you're making in this community. And, um, you know, I'm willing to be your partner. I'm, I'm willing to work with my board members and continue with the Redevelopment Commission. I think the partnership between the two of you all will be dynamite. We need more homeowners. But understanding that, is there a plan to work in other areas so that we could provide rental units? Because homeownership is not for everybody, and we do understand that, but we still need to provide affordable, safe housing for so many of our citizens. So is that something, I know that's not Habitat's model, but is that something where you can work with redevelopment or however, however we need to, to start rehabbing some of this?
Our, our focus really is on shelter. And, uh, when we meet with the Redevelopment Commission on Thursday, that's where our conversation's going, because we do, as a, a community, need to talk about homeownership, of course, but we do have to have rental. We have to have transitional housing also. So, we need to address the homeless issue. We have to look at all of that so that we have a completely healthy community here. And right now, we, affordable housing, affordable rental, transitional housing, housing for the homeless, those are, are some areas of improvement that we as a community need to go ahead and address, so, yes.
Thank you, I do appreciate you doing it. You've built a great team, too.
All right, yes, I do, I've been really lucky. I got a couple of them here, that Betsy and, and Antoinette, and, okay, and that's it. But I have an awesome team, so yeah, I, I come out and make. I come out and make all the noise, but they do the work, so. Are there any other questions?
No, no question, just a statement. I just want to say thank you to you and your staff, and it was, uh, joy to hear that you are partnering with the Redevelopment Commission. That's awesome. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you so much.
Mike, just, you may want to touch base with redevelopment. There was a late change today, that meeting might not take place Thursday because of the, um, visitation for Commissioner Sampson. So you may want to touch base on it. You're welcome.
Okay, this time, Mr. Stevens, item number 13.
Thank you, Mayor, item number 13 is a presentation by Neuse River Keeper. It's a request of the board, uh, Lower Neuse River Keeper, Katie Hunt is with us tonight. She will discuss the fish kills that's been recently seen, uh, in the Neuse River. She has a presentation for us tonight as well. That's going to explain a little bit of the reason for and causes for these fish kills and what is known about the algae species that are grown, growing within, uh, our, our rivers. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to her so that she can present to you, and I'm sure she's going to open it up for any questions the board may have.
Thank you, um, my name is Katie Hunt. I am your Lower Neuse River Keeper. I work for the organization Sound Rivers, formerly the Neuse River Foundation. We merged about five, six years ago with the Pamlico Tar River Foundation. So now between two rivers, three riverkeepers, we cover 23% of North Carolina's landmass and serving over 2 million people in that area. And, someone. And someone mentioned earlier tonight that it's been a very uplifting evening so far. And I'm sorry, but I'm here to ruin all of that. So, a little bit about this latest fish kill. The reports started coming in right at the very end of September, and it was reports of just Atlantic Minhaiden, small little silverfish, but very important. The areas that most of the reports were coming from include Carolina Pines, the mouth of Slocum Creek, Kennel Beach, Goose Creek, kinda downstream, and just generally downstream of the Fairfield Harbor area. The Department of Environmental Quality has been out twice, once early October, once on the 22nd, in two different locations to collect samples and analyze for the potential cause. Both times, the cause was identified as an algal bloom, and the species of algae identified were not known to be toxic to humans or the environment, so. However, we're still, is a month-long report of fish dying every single day. The last reports I got were right on the 30th, 31st of October. Also, MODMON, another research entity in the state, they went and they collected samples also in the middle of the month, and again confirmed, algal bloom, not toxic species, thank goodness. So, for people who haven't seen any of the photos or any of the interviews or anything, those little white specks there are actually the Atlantic Minhaiden. And also in the bottom right corner is a dead seagull. This is the first time there's ever been dead, any other kind of wildlife beyond fish species or crabs. We cannot say for certain if the dead gull, and this is not the only one, there was two or three in this area in Carolina Pines, cannot say for sure it's related to the fish kill, but we also can't rule it out either. So, why I'm here tonight is, this is an unprecedented event. It's truly an environmental disaster. A month-long, daily reports of fish dying is something we have not seen here on the news since the 90s. And it's, the Atlantic Minhaiden are pretty much the only species with the exception of some crabs and other critters that might get into crab pots and cannot escape the areas of low oxygen. These Atlantic Minhaiden, like I said, they're an integral cog to our ecosystem. They have both commercial, economic uses, they're, they actually eat the algae that results in killing them. And they are, of course, prey for larger fish species, much like the recreational fish species like bats and everything. So, also I wanna mention that, not once but twice, the Neuse River was named by American Rivers Top 10 Most Endangered Rivers, once in 2007 and again in 2017. And a lot of times when I tell people that fact, they ask, well, where are we on the list? And I think once you're in the top 10 of all the rivers in the United States as the worst, it doesn't really matter. And it's not a list you want to be on. So, what is the ultimate cause of the algal blooms? Ultimately, it's nutrient pollution. I know it sounds strange because nutrients are good, but just like the old adage, too much of a good thing is a bad thing. And nutrient pollution is introduced to our waterways through different sources, including stormwater runoff, sewer spills, much like has been plaguing Havlock the past several years, and also is just an issue statewide. And then also agricultural runoff from animal waste at these big industrial animal facilities. Yes, that kind of pink triangle at the bottom is just an open-air lagoon of feces, urine, blood, pus, all sorts of nastiness, which are also extremely prone to hurricanes, floods. That is a different facility, and you can almost not even see the lagoon because it is completely inundated by the Neuse River. That's upstream a bit of a ways near Goldsboro. So, nutrients leading to fish kill, it's, again, it seems so strange that nutrients are a good thing. So, the nutrients in our waterways essentially fertilize this algae, which then it blooms and then dies. And it's that decomposition process that eats up the oxygen and leading to areas of hypoxia, meaning low oxygen, and essentially just suffocating the fish, leading to the unsightly dead fish floating on our waters. So, it's not all doom and gloom, it's mostly doom and gloom. But there are some things that we can be doing, both individually and as a city, but also regionally. So, things like necessary maintenance and upgrades to our sewer and stormwater systems with keeping an eye to the future. You know, we don't, we're not just talking about upgrading it for tomorrow. We want it to be upgraded and ready for 10 years, 15 years down the road. We've seen, you know, Florence, Matthew, we're seeing more frequent hurricanes. This is another unprecedented year for hurricanes. They're getting more frequent, they're getting stronger and more damaging, and we need to be as best prepared as we can through things like, especially just our stormwater infrastructure, things like wetlands, I know we've got the constructed wetlands here in town, which is already a fantastic endeavor. We also, on a more regional scale, need better regulations to prevent pollution, as well as better enforcement of polluters. Our state enforcement agency, Department of Environmental Quality, I'm sure you know, has been severely underfunded for years now. It's just budget cuts after budget cuts that they're, I often say, working with one arm tied behind their back and both of their legs cut off at their knees. And then, any other kind of wetland buffer restoration protection, and unfortunately, I should've changed the color on that, but we do also at soundrivers.org, it's our website. We have an action alert that everyone in this room tonight can go home or get on your phone right now and send a letter to our representatives urging them to do some of these things, providing funding for municipalities, for upgrades and maintenance of stormwater and sewer, also for creating regulations. One thing, much like the massive month-long fish kill that hasn't happened since the 90s, was the nutrient rules were created in the 90s, and they haven't been touched since. And that's another thing that needs to be done, more on the regional area. And I guess to kind of harp on the, the local things, you know, this is a New Bern problem, but it's not only a New Bern problem, it's not just our fault, it's not all on our shoulders. It's, we need to be a beacon or inspiration for the folks upstream to get their act together, because everything that they put in the river, up in Raleigh, Smithfield, Goldsboro, Kinston, it all comes here to New Bern. And also, everything that we put in the river here makes its way out to Oriental, the Sound, and the ocean. It's not a problem that was created overnight, it's unfortunately not a problem that will be solved overnight. But it is something that we can do locally, individually, and regionally to finally stop this problem. You know, fish kills are something that I'm sure everyone in this room has heard about multiple times a year, every year, four years. And I don't know about the rest of everyone, but I'm frankly tired of it. And I would like to see anything and everything that can be done, being done to prevent this problem for the future. Thank you.
Do we have questions? We appreciate this presentation.
I actually, I actually have a question. If, is Jordan available? Jordan, can you come up? I have a question for you, actually. I'll ask my question while you're approaching. Jordan, what has the city of New Bern done to mitigate the nutrients in the Neuse River?
Autonastor, that is a great question. I'll tell you briefly, the city of New Bern was one of the founding members of the Neuse River Compliance Association and the Lower Neuse Basin Association. These two groups essentially were formed back in the mid 90s, we're having large fish kills, they made a lot of headlines, got a lot of publicity. Regionally, to take a look at what can we do as point source dischargers, people that are basically putting wastewater discharge into the Neuse River, municipal sewer plants, so New Bern, Kinston, all of our municipal plants, all the way to Raleigh, Johnson County, Goldsboro, everybody in between, got together to look at ways we could share ideas, collaborate resources, to work on practical issues, work on permit issues. And the good news, kind of a good news, bad news situation. The good news, in the last 25 years, this group has invested over $500 million, it's half a billion dollars, in projects to reduce nutrient loading to the Neuse River estuary. The good news, that has worked. As these areas have grown in population, large, metro areas like Raleigh and parts of Johnson Kelly have really boomed in population, even here locally in, in New Bern, our population has grown in the last 25 years. With all the population growth, new development, we're putting less nutrient loading into the estuary than we were back then. So that, that's a pat on the back to all of your fellow board members, commissioners, who have supported the projects and pushed those things forward. And those efforts will need to continue in the future. The, the bad news, and the other side of that story is, we continue to fund and monitor funding for programs that are looking at the nutrient levels to date. And what's happened is the nutrient levels in the rivers essentially remain static. So, a lot of the same programs that the river keeper mentioned with Ferry MONT and MODMONT are the same programs that we look at for monitoring river health. And what that has shown us is with all the efforts that the municipalities have put in, all the money that's been invested, we've done great things, we've reduced our nutrient lever, discharge levels. However, it hasn't had much of an impact on the estuary. So there's still a much bigger problem that's contributing to the nutrient loading and contributing to the, the ongoing fish kill. So it's important, moving forward, to continue to help fund those monitoring programs. So we, and New Bern does that, we help fund the MODMONT program that Hans Pearl does out of UNC Chapel Hill. And to under better, keep, keep getting a better understanding of what's happening in estuaries so we can help to develop better policies for, you know, having lower nutrient loading in the river. But at this point, I think from a municipal standpoint, we really, we've done a lot, we will continue to do everything we can. But we've really, over the last 25 years, there's been a lot of focus and attention put on our municipal dischargers. I think collectively, we've done a good job of doing our part and helping to, you know, better the situation in the estuary. And we'll continue to do our part, and, and that effort as well as looking at research that will help us, you know, find the, the, the other sources of nutrient loading.
Explain to us, where does the city of New Bern discharge its treated water?
So all of our discharged water coming from our main wastewater treatment plant goes to two locations. One is to the reclamation facility, which is one of the smaller lakes at the Mark Marietta facility. The other is to a diffuser that's about 200 yards offshore in the Neuse River behind the treatment plant. So it goes out into the river, we have a, a diffuser on the river bottom that kind of distributes that flow over a, a few hundred feet versus a, a single point. That's pretty typical for direct discharges. Most other plants, as you go up the, the river basin to Kinston, to Johnson County, to Raleigh, they have very similar type direct discharges.
And why can't we direct all of our treated water to the reservoir?
Hydraulically, can't, can't hold it. It, it's hydraulically limited how much we can put in there throughout the year, and we try to maximize that. We do have some benefit of getting some water out of that with a reclaim operation. We have a couple of reclaimed customers that will take the reclaimed water, the treated water, and use that for irrigation on sod farms.
Or Minogue?
Jordan, the, is it the same water that goes to the reclamation lagoon as gets dispersed out? Those two points that you just mentioned, is it the same water?
Yes, sir.
So, we kind of have a checks and balances, if you will, 'cause there's obviously fish in the lagoon at the quarry. So if we were to see fish kills there, that would give us an inclination that we were discharging something bad into the river. Is, is my logic right there?
Good, good, good logic, I follow, I follow what you're saying, and that, that would, that would be a, a, a pretty good, I guess, sample from, from A and B to C. You got water going here, there's a problem, you got the same water going here, we don't see the same problem. You, you could, you know, you could, you make that assertion that you don't have the problem. Largely, you know, from, from a volume, strictly volume standpoint, the municipal plants are a, a fraction of a fraction of the water that gets discharged into the river basin. The, the vast majority of the water that makes its way to the river and into the estuary is from stormwater runoff. And where that stormwater runoff goes and how it travels is largely the contributing factor into the nutrient loading as it's running across agricultural fields, as it's running across flooded hog lagoons, things of that nature will create the problems, will create the nutrient carry. The reason why we've done so much work at the municipal, on the municipal side, and we've invested so much water, is that it's a single point, they're, they're point source discharge. So you've got a plant that discharges that are already regulated, it's easy to continue to regulate, it's easier to monitor. It, it's very hard to monitor and regulate rainfall on woodlands and how much of that makes it off into the river. Those, those things are very difficult to measure and regulate. And there's not a structure in place to do that very precisely right now. With the municipal plants, there's already a structure in place, we're already operating under very stringent permits, very highly regulated at our plants, so it's easy to, to kind of turn those dials to try to reduce nutrient loading. And that's what we've done for the last 25 years, is worked really hard collectively in this basin. Even the folks from, from Raleigh down, you know, so Katie made a very good point. This isn't just a New Bern problem, this is everybody in the river basin, the river basin goes all the way to Raleigh. That's a lot of population in this river basin. And I'll tell you, there's some of the biggest advocates for, on the municipal side, trying to help find funding, find ways to reduce the nutrient loading coming out of the plants, are the folks in Johnson County, the, the plant managers in Raleigh. So those folks are doing a lot of work and a lot of effort that's really helping us down here, 'cause they, they don't have fish kills in Raleigh, and they all, like she said, all the stuff ends up here. We have the problems here in the estuary. But collectively, I think we've got a pretty good direction we've been headed in the last 25 years, and we'll continue to head in with our Lower Neuse Basin Association and our Neuse River Compliance Association.
Interesting thing to add to that is, when Foster was doing his evaluation of the Mark Marietta Pond Lakes out there and the water quality, when we were looking at potentially utilizing those lakes for parks and recreation, that particular lake that we use that we discharge is actually the cleanest of the three lakes that we actually tested the water quality of, and actually had the most aquatic wildlife in it as far as whenever we did the analysis and had the fish and wildlife come in and do the shocking of the water to determine how many species and what kind of species they were and everything else. So, very interesting dynamic that you have there with regards to what the city discharges in, into these areas, and what we're discharging into the Neuse in comparison to what's actually coming downstream to us from other places throughout the Neuse River basin.
Jordan, two, two more questions. One, why aren't the lagoons, why don't, why shouldn't they have to burn the lagoons up to keep them from overflowing?
Which lagoons, Autonastor?
Like at the hog farms and stuff?
They, they are, they are required to have a certain amount of freeboard, they're not allowed to fill them to the brim. Most of them have enough freeboard to get through a substantial rain event. I will tell you, in east North Carolina, what you will find is a lot of, historically, a lot of your hog lagoons were built in areas that were undesirable, so these were low-line areas, close to swamps, close to drainageways. The bigger problem you have is not so much of an overflowing, is big flood events from hurricanes, you know, Floyd, Irene, Matthew, Florence, and the list goes on. These low-line areas flood, when they flood, they flood into the lagoon, all that, you know, all the wastewater's in the lagoon, rolls out of the lagoon into the flood, into the floodlands and the swamps right at the waterways. And you've seen, I think she had some pictures earlier, you could see that when the entire site of the hog farm was completely underwater, and that's happened numerous times in the last 20 years as well.
And my last question, with all the, I know of a few of the abandoned quarries where they've stopped digging around the New Bern area, would it, could we possibly purchase another one to discharge and, and get out of the river completely? I mean, is that?
To make the, the, to switch from a point source to a non-point source essentially, is always an option. Unfortunately, where we're at here, with our proximity to the river, there, there is still a connection. So even, even the water we pump into the quarry today, because of the, the nature of the moral rock underneath the quarry, it will eventually leach its way back in the system. This is a, you know, kind of a, some, we've done a lot of modeling work in the state through our permitting process in the last 20 years for the reclamation facility. It kind of shows the length of time it takes to do all that. There, there are some options there. The proximity to the Mark Marietta plant, quarry to our existing plant, created a good opportunity, a cost feasible opportunity to really do what we've done there. You, you would probably be a stretch to try to carry that much wastewater, you know, another five miles or so to get to another open quarry.
Oh, you got one right there off of, what, Simmons Street?
Much smaller, yeah, you know, Rennie Creek. Much smaller, yeah. You know, Rennie Creek Mine, yes, sir. And I'll, I'll close and say, you know, 25 years ago, I think this was a very adversarial conversation. This was, had a lot of emotion in it, a lot of people on both sides. I will tell you today that this is a very collaborative conversation. From the Lower Nuis Basin Association to the municipalities, to the folks that are monitoring the health of the river, the river keepers. I think there's a lot more collaboration, but everybody working together. And I think the efforts will have shown some fruit. And I think it will continue to as long as everybody has the, you know, the big picture in mind and the right goal and we keep moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add on a couple of points that Jordan made that, yeah, the wastewater treatment has done a fantastic job with staying under their, you know, nutrient levels through the, you know, putting it through the quarry, and that's great. And like he said, that the non-point source, the stormwater runoff, really is our, I guess, our wild card because you cannot say exactly where and how it's all coming from. And that's why I also wanted to applaud the New Bern Resiliency Plan and survey that went out. I took that, definitely highlighted the stormwater ones on there. Because there are actually some stormwater infrastructure, some green infrastructure here in town at the Tryon Palace, actually. They've got those little wetland, the bioretention ponds. They act as an extra filter. So any runoff from the streets downtown will go through those retention ponds and be filtered and kind of cleaned out before entering. There's also a permeable parking structure there as well. So things like that green infrastructure, it looks cool, it makes us look cool, and it actually does provide a good benefit to our environment by helping to prevent the amount of nutrients and other pollutants from entering our waterways. Another thing, you asked about the berms around the hog lagoons. Yes, they do have berms, there's the freeboard, it's a violation if they're too full. And however, in between the big hurricanes Floyd, Florence, Matthew, all the, all the good ones, that waste isn't just sitting there, it's being applied onto fields and is often overapplied. And so, you know, plants only need so many nutrients. And if you're just keep keeping nutrients on there, their roots aren't going to uptake them. Rain comes and it washes it off. So there's still nutrient pollution coming from these facilities, not just when we have major storm events. And I'm not trying to put all the blame on them either. But, yeah, stormwater is, is kind of where I think we should really be focusing. I was able to attend the MS four training in Jacksonville. And what they've been able to do with their stormwater program is very exciting. I nerded out a whole lot. And I would love to see New Bern apply some of those same programs here and really be just the shining example of a river friendly town. And Sound Rivers is more than happy, like I'm here asking, we would love to partner with you on any and all kind of stormwater work, you know, outreach, education, et cetera. We've actually partnered with several of the high schools here in Craven County, New Bern, West Craven, Havelock, and the Epiphany School to, we've surveyed their campuses for areas of stormwater concern and have been implementing control measures such as cisterns, rain gardens, bioretention ponds, swales, and also providing the teachers there with lesson plans. So we're providing educational material. These control measures not only are actively helping to prevent pollutants from entering our waterways, but they also become outdoor classrooms, which is, right now, a lot safer than the indoor ones and a lot more fun, so.
Mr. Mayor, let me ask you, would it be to the city of New Bern's best interest? I mean, I was rather shocked when I heard about Neuse River being on the top 10 list twice. Would it be to the city of New Bern's best interest if we were to send a resolution to our state legislators asking them to help better, provide funds, maybe we get word from you, provide funds for better enforcement?
Well, I know that, talking about hog farms, I think of the swine operations, they produce about five times the amount of fecal matter that humans do. And so when you're putting that raw sewage basically spraying on, there's, there's a lot of things going on here. I think that in answer to your question, I only mention that because could you imagine if City of New Bern were, were effectively spraying raw sewage on land applications like that? And what effect that would have? That's basically what some of those agricultural industry models are doing. But in it, again, back to your question, I think that City, and one reason that she's here tonight is I have had quite a few calls and, and I reached out to the manager, to reach out to the river keeper, number one, to check and balance what we're doing, where we are, what stewards we are. I do know in Isla County and even Holly Ridge, they're doing pervious driveways now. And so it's, it's just not one thing that's going to correct some of it. It's just, it's a lot of things. And the blame game is something that's just not an opportunity to correct. I mean, it's, it's a little bit holistically here and there that collectively, all of these things. But I think that's a great idea to come in here and maybe work with river keeper, craft a letter that is appropriate for where the city wants to go in addition to what we're already doing. And give us some IE questions, ideas about what maybe you'd like to see the city do to assist, to be more of a model and a steward of a cleaner river.
Oh, gosh, where do I begin?
Let's give you your top five, Sally.
Really revamping, like putting a lot more funding time into our stormwater program. Also, I'd love to see a lot of, like, wetland restoration protection because those are nature's filter. They help prevent the flooding issues and they help prevent the pollution. They're, they're great on both ends. Let's see, better education and outreach so that people understand why fish kills are happening, what nutrient pollution is, how they can be, you know, helpful on an individual basis. Things like not applying fertilizer to very small things like picking up after your pets. You know, the waste that just gets left there, there's bacteria and the nutrients. All of that stormwater runs right there into the river. Those are some of the things. And like I said, I know that New Bern's coming up on their MS four audit next year. And there is at least two of the six minimum measures, you know, pertaining to education outreach that Sound Rivers would love to be a part of and, you know, assist the city in accomplishing those goals.
Well, if you'd like to sit down with a couple of the auditorium myself and some of the staff members, we'd be more than glad to look at some things we can do and bring it back to the board for approval.
The only reason I say, you know, I have a, I have an interest in a fairly large bait and tackle shop in New Bern. And to be able to hear the fishermen when they come in, because the trout fishing and the striper fishing, and the puppy drum fishing now is a big part of our business. And to hear the fishermen come in and you ask them, did you catch any fish today? He said, hell, the only thing we caught was a net full or a boatload of dead Manhattan. It stinks so bad. And it's really having an effect on the guys that are fishing. I mean, they don't want to go out there because they're scared they're going to catch something. So, you know, for New Bern, for the Neuse River to be on the, the list of the top 10 rivers, that was fairly shocking. I don't know why I didn't know that before, but, so I think we should, we should stand up and, and fight to get some help and get this river cleaned up.
There is funding and grants out and available, state, federal, and probably some private as well, to specifically help with things like stormwater or green infrastructure, kind of like that already exists at the Tryon Palace.
And I see Margaret's back there shaking her head a little bit, so she's, she's apparently already on it, so.
Help me, help me with one thing. I think I remember reading somewhere that by the time water is leaving from the Raleigh area, Johnston County, on down to Oldsboro, that it, it has a certain velocity or momentum that somewhere out around Northwest Creek, in that area, this water kind of starts to slow down more or it meets tidal waters. And I've, I've always read that that in itself right there is one of your major polluted areas because of that. Is that true?
Yes, essentially with the, you know, river widens up, it goes from this to a mile to several miles. It's very, very wind driven, not flow driven anymore. And so that, along with, you know, it's an estuary, the salinity levels are higher and fluctuate. One of the reasons that we don't have, you know, Raleigh doesn't have fish kills is they don't have Atlantic Manhattan, which I affectionately refer to as weak sauce. They are our canary in the coal mine because they are the first ones to really be affected by the, you know, water quality conditions. They don't have Manhattan really that far up. And also the species of algae that are prone to blooms are much more estuarine species. So that's why we always see it here in our estuary as well.
So I kind of point that to like people, you know, we have a lot of people complain about our litter. And, and the litter is not necessarily totally New Bernians littering. It might be folks coming from somewhere else that are doing it. But having said that, what I am trying to stress is that some of the, if you, if you really research this thing and look into what I'm talking about off of Northwest Creek, that is not a problematic New Bern cause and effect. That, that is something coming from somewhere else that's coming down here that's kind of settling near New Bern that maybe if New Bern again crafts some information, attend, you know, germane to that particular item, maybe we could get our folks upstream kind of.
Absolutely, and like you said, it's, we're not playing the blame game, we're not pointing fingers. It's, it's them, us, and everybody. And, you know, like I said, it's not just New Bern's responsibility to fix this problem. But I would love to see our town really be just that, that shining light of an example on how to be a river friendly town.
Well, you're here tonight because we have, all have a lot of complaints and we don't necessarily, any, any of us have the answers. And so you're here to kind of help us do our part, and thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you for attending.
Mr. Stevens, how about, let's go to item number 14.
Last one of the night presentations, Mayor. We have our Parks and Recreation Director here, Foster Hughes. He's going to provide us a quick presentation on reaccreditation. This is something that Parks and Recreation Department's been working on over the past year. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to him to give the board an update on their reaccreditation process and possibly some good news.
Mayor, boards, good to see you. And this will be a brief presentation. I wanted to let you know that back in 2015, we were nationally accredited by the Commission for Accreditation of Parks and Recreation Agencies. That accreditation lasts five years. So this past September, it was time for us to go through the process again. Traditionally, visitors will come to New Bern to look at our programs, our facilities, and go through all of our paperwork and policies and procedures. With COVID-19, this was a virtual experience for us. So we were doing Zoom meetings with them in the mornings and evenings for five days. They requested a lot of information from us and we had help from Development Services, Police Department, the City Manager, Human Resources. A lot of the departments provided some information because this is truly a citywide effort. So with accreditation, it's based on 154 standards that we have to work on and meet. Out of those standards, we have to comply with 36 fundamental standards and 112 non-fundamental standards. And it covers things from master planning to personnel, general policies and procedures, rules and regulations, ethics, programming, fiscal management, and so many more things. And so we're really excited that during the national conference that our NRP A held a few weeks ago, that they had the best of the best ceremony. And we were very, very pleased to see that New Bern was reaccredited for five more years. So really excited about that. We haven't received our certificate yet, but we look forward to getting that and look forward to remaining accredited for many years to come. And if anyone has any questions, we're happy to answer them.
So we're only one of 13 in the whole state. I think that's pretty cool.
That's right. So 186 in the nation. Now think about how many towns, cities, counties there are throughout the United States. And the majority of those have Parks and Recreation Departments. Only 186 in the nation and 13 in North Carolina. We're the only accredited agency east of the I-95 as well. So, yeah, so it's a big accomplishment.
It's really a testament, you know, how many times have we talked about that what we do as Alderman and as the board is, is quality of life and what the city provides for our citizens is quality of life. And Parks and Recreation is really probably one of the most important quality of life things we provide for our citizens. And Foster, I can't thank you enough. Our parks look great. They look maintained, manicured. And I'm just seeing, you know, more and more programs for all ages. So I really want to thank you. I, I think this is a great testament to the work of you and your staff, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations to your staff.
Congratulations.
And to Foster, and to Foster's point, there's five, over, a little over 550 municipalities in the state of North Carolina. So that kind of puts that 13 in the perspective. And then you take the 186 nationwide and multiply that by 50 states, you probably have a pretty good, pretty good number there.
It's going to be a lot better when we get that amphitheater.
That's right. We're excited about it.
Thank you, Foster.
Okay, ready to go to item 15?
Mayor, item number 15 is a public hearing and consideration for the board to adopt a resolution to amend the historic district guidelines. The Historic Preservation Commission approved changes to the historic district guidelines and the Planning and Zoning Board recommended approval of the changes that are before you tonight. These guidelines were recently amended on the 14th of July, 2020. But the new revisions address unique issues that have arisen due to a modern subdivision with 17 vacant lots that are on the edge of the historic, downtown historic area. So at this point, I'm going to ask Matt Shelley to come up. He's going to briefly go over these changes before you open up for the public hearing. And then at that point, if the board has any questions of Mr. Shelley, he would be happy to answer those.
Good evening. Essentially, we are just adding a, what's called a new development pattern to the guidelines. The guidelines currently has three separate types of development patterns. One essentially being the downtown development pattern, properties close to the sidewalk, filling the lot, parking lots, things like that. The second one is more or less the residential development pattern that we're all very familiar with as the historic district. And then thirdly, there's also a waterfront development pattern because that is even different than those other two. So what's come up now is there is a, an area of the historic district which is, has 17 vacant lots in it. And it's the area at the end of Queen Street and the end of East Front Street. That area there where there's now currently one lone house standing amongst the other vacant lots. This is a development pattern that is much different than anywhere else in the historic districts due to the fact that it was laid out using a planned unit development process and also using a more modern philosophy to lot layouts. So ironically called traditional, neo-traditional development, which in that case added alleys along the two sides, left and right sides of the main road that goes through the middle. Those alleys are actually no, there is nowhere else in historic New Bern that actually has alleys. So that makes this particular area different than everywhere else. And due to the alleys and the very narrow lots that each one of these lots has, it creates a different situation with regard to access to the site, occupation of the site, how much land is built on the site, et cetera. So until now, it hasn't been a problem because it's been vacant. Now, the owners of the vacant lots are starting to propose new development on those lots. And so our current guidelines weren't able to address some of the issues that come up with those vacant lots. So these, this new development pattern called Narrow Stitch is being introduced to address those issues. And then there's a couple of other details that we're also addressing in the process. The design principles is also amended with this. And we're also anticipating, especially for that neighborhood there, but then overlapping to any other neighborhood, especially with views of the river, to preclude something to preclude something which could happen, but which would be very nonhistoric, and that would be roof decks attached to the tops of the roofs. So that's what the last one is all about there. So that essentially wraps up these four simple, four simple changes to the guidelines.
Not that simple.
Otherwise, if you have any questions.
Any questions of the board this time for open public hearing?
You have the questions now or later?
You do what you're.
I'd rather open up the public hearing here and then have questions from it.
We're going to open a public hearing at this time. Anybody like to come forward, ask questions, make comments, statements concerning this item? You're more than welcome to come up and do that. Public hearing is open.
May I move that we close the public hearing?
Motion second to close, is there discussion? Seeing none, on favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
On opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Matt, help me and, you know, I'm sorry, I'm going to kind of delve into this a little bit. I may have to get you to, to step back a little bit and help me to understand about this narrow stitch because I, I have some concerns. Yes, the lots are really small and these lots were, well, this, this HUD was done when there was a historic district. So historic district rules were in place. Why did they make them so narrow? Why did they allow the alleys when there was nowhere else? I'm concerned that, that no thought was given to that or they allowed it without review of the HPC. I'm almost, in the back of my mind, because I served on the HPC in the nineties, probably in the mid-nineties, and I, I think that either was right before then or after that. So I have concern there. And are we then, are you going to be coming back to us to, to change the zoning for the heights and how many stories they can build? Because if they've got these narrow, as you're talking, those lots are so narrow and the narrow buildings, how are they going to, you know, and, and they're going to be one on top of the other. You're removing the alleys now, so I have, I have a lot of concern about this right now.
Sure. So the HUD was done back in the early two thousands, two thousand four, three, five, somewhere in that time period, which was also shortly after the, the new urban design plan had been done as well. And there was some discussion at that time about this type of neo-traditional planning at the time. But some of the features that actually became attractive to the city at the time, albeit without any conversation, as you said, with the HPC. Some of the things that were attractive were that with the alleys, there would be no driveways from the front street. And also with very narrow lots, that would then afford somewhat wider building house with also front porches all across the front. And so there is the, the belief that that kind of pattern is very pedestrian-friendly. You don't have potential cars driving across the sidewalk when pedestrians are going by, children, whatever. And also that, that would encourage walking. And then as you have people walking and porches, that then encourages community building. So those are some of the, the theories at least. And so that is what became attractive. In addition, the, the HUD afforded the opportunity for a green space to be created along the river as well. So as you know, as you may know, if you drive down there, there's a short little fence and then there's a green space. So that will remain as open space, that will not be developed as private property. So that at least affords the public view over the, over the river that you might not otherwise have. So it was a second.
So, but this does not address the height issue though, correct?
That's correct. The height is not, the HPC and the guidelines have nothing to do with height.
So you'll have to come back on that because I know that's, if that's in an area over there, well, maybe the HPC will have to come back.
No, no, the HPC will not be doing that. Because that's a totally zoning, that's a zoning issue. It's not a guidelines issue.
I just, I have some concerns about how it's, the density of all that. And, and again, trying to accomplish what you want to accomplish with porches and other things. And it, I mean, we could see by the house that's already there, that would be somewhat replicated, correct? It's tall and thin.
Right, it could potentially be replicated. So to a certain extent, fortunately, the applications we've seen so far have not been that at all. They have all had more pitched gable roofs and things like that, which were much more traditional to New Bern.
If the lots are narrow, don't they, I, I just, I, I see, I've seen the designs, but I just can't envision how it would be there. If this was not changed, what restrictions would be placed on those lots? What would they have to build? What's there if this was not, if you did not enter this new language?
Right, so the, one of the biggest issues, there were some smaller issues as well, but the biggest issue was with regard to the guidelines specify currently that you cannot have an attached garage to your house because that is not typical throughout the rest of the historic district. This specific area though has the alleys that I mentioned. And so the alleys and the narrowness of the lots, relatively small size of the lots, pretty much requires, necessitates, let's put it that way, necessitates the need to have the garages attached to the houses. There's just not enough room on those lots to have both a modern-sized home. And we're not going to talk about building shacks or, or cottages or anything, but a modern-sized home with a modern-sized garage. So all of that together, it, it almost has to be attached. So in that, and, and the alleys afford that in a way that you can't really allow, wow. It wouldn't be appropriate to have an attached garage anywhere else in the historic district. Because nowhere else are there alleys. So they'd be attached in very awkward and inappropriate locations on lots elsewhere in the, in the historic district.
And this new design and development pattern, this only applies to new construction, correct? So you wouldn't rehab a home to try to fit into this?
Well, so the pattern is, describes that area. And that area only has new construction. Now, there could perhaps be other areas in the historic district if there were, say, some vacant lots or some other areas that had some alleys somehow. Let's say the historic district were expanded into some of the Duffy Field area where some of those streets are like their alleys. That might be a case where that kind of pattern could be used there. But it's not necessar, the pattern itself is not necessarily relegated to new infill construction.
Sorry to my colleagues, I know a lot of questions, but in my district, this is probably such an important piece of who we are downtown. And I know that the historic district has brought a lot of value to our community.
Absolutely.
And I'm a strong proponent of it and want to make sure that we're asking all the questions. So thank you for allowing me to ask you all my questions, Mayor, for this all I have. Nobody else has any other questions? Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution to amend the historic district guidelines.
Second.
Motion and second, is there further discussion? Seeing none, several calls starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw? Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Finkel?
Yes.
Anything else on that item? That's it. Item number sixteen.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number sixteen is a public hearing on the rezoning of three-two-zero-five Country Club Road from R fifteen to R ten. As we always do with rezonings, the board needs to consider adopting a statement of zoning consistency or inconsistency. And in doing so, if the board chooses to find that this zoning is consistent with the city's zoning in, in the area, then at that point, they need to adopt an ordinance to rezone three-two-zero-five Country Club Road. So happy to answer any questions at that point. But at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Rugeri. He's got a presentation for you for this rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Tonight, we have the consideration to request a property at thirty-two-zero-five Country Club Road from R fifteen to R ten. The applicants, Samantha Wendell Wright, along with Brian McCracken, are requesting that rezoning. The lot size is approximately a half of an acre, point four or five acres, and it's currently vacant. There's a picture of the property right there. You'll see all the other side of the road is Trent Woods. And the side obviously is all city of New Bern. Bagan. Existing zonings, R fifteen designated for low-density, single-family dwellings. No townhomes, no duplexes, all single-family. R ten gives you a little more flexibility in construction and design. So it's a conglate, single and, and townhomes, two-family homes, along with duplexes. If you get into multifamily stuff, you can work on densities with that extra five thousand square foot required. Again, the use is in R ten. Everything around it is R fifteen. And across the street is Trent Woods and there's that office park right across the street from it also. All the cities, all the utilities are provided by city of New Bern. Can, land use plan is just a developed area, suitable for a mix of uses and a mix of residential densities. Property is in the hundred-year floodplain, but it's suitable for development. Went to P and Z in October. P and Z recommended that you approve the, the rezoning. They voted unanimously to approve it. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at this point, Tom.
Well, I have a question. I, I guess I'll go and ask it now rather than the public hearing because it might help sharing the public hearing. Every one of these is a, is a case-by-case basis. And first thing, when I look at these maps, everything around it's R fifteen. So maybe I should, maybe I shouldn't, but if I go to Craven thirty or West Craven or Blue Water Rise or any of those areas that are presently new development, I seriously doubt, but to fit the home model that somebody might want to put on there, that we would go into an R eight in Taverna and change it to an R six or an R ten maybe in Craven West, that we would drop to an R six because of homogenous nature. And I think you've mentioned that the consistency factor, but in, in the R ten, with the ten thousand square feet minimum lot size, I think it also mentioned that with another five thousand square feet, you could do a dependent by a, a separate building of sorts on, on the property. So to me, if that were the case, which again, I think part of our decisions to change zoning has nothing to do with what the particular item might be if somebody requesting it, but that doesn't appear to me for what is there, that, that would be consistent even though you got an unanimous vote from your zoning board. So again, like hypothetically, like in my neighborhood, Cypress Shores, that's R twenty. If somebody wanted to come in and build a dependency or, I guess, Cheryl she shed or a man cave.
It could be a she shed, what did you say, it's she shed?
Well, that's what we call them, you know. So, you know, the one that burped down on the insurance. That's not maybe allowed. So a neighbor where we've got consistent, homogenous zoning, say in my neighborhood, would be coming up wanting a lesser depth zone. And I know that's something that the board adjustments cannot grant variance on something like that because if they could, I would be telling you to take this back to the board adjustments and seeing if they think whatever a proposed improvement might be would, would be consistent. As Mr. Fraser, I, I will tell you, I see this all day long where things like this happen that it doesn't typically affect value. So markability and value I don't see as an issue. The harmony of the neighborhood may or may not be affected by this R ten proposal. So I think more than anything, I'm a little concerned that the preponderance of that area zoning is R fifteen. And this looks like instead of where, correct me if I'm wrong, and redefine for the board and the public, the spirit of a zoning, rezoning request is not specific to a particular purchaser's needs or a particular owner's needs. It's a generalized thought process as to whether or not breaching the etiquette of sorts of a, of a pattern zoning is, is a consistent use and a maximal, optimal use of, of the, of the harmony of the neighborhood with something less than what has always been there in the R fifteen.
Sure, well, let me just clarify that extra, the five thousand square foot statement. That's when, if you're going to a different type of, you can't put a single fam, two single-family homes on there, but that, that's more of a multifamily units when you're calculating density to do multifamily-type things and duplexes. So essentially, it is a one-house lot at this point in time, the way it's zoned.
No duplexes, no condos.
Correct.
Single-family detached.
Yeah, R twenty.
Minimum, minimum size, ten thousand feet. But if a person had fifteen thousand and eight feet, they could do something with the five thousand feet. Is that correct?
That is cor, they couldn't put another unit on there.
Not as detached home, but you could put, give me some examples of what you could put there with five thousand and eight feet square foot extra.
Yeah, that's for determination if you're doing multifamily-type stuff. So that's what, that's an extra unit. So you could have twenty thousand square feet or fifty thousand square feet in that zoning. So that first unit would count for the full zoning of fifteen thousand square feet. And then every other unit would be a five, you'd need five thousand square feet for another unit.
And what, hypothetically, what would another unit be? Would it be a, a she shed, a Cheryl she shed?
No, that would be accessory structure.
Would it be a man cave?
Yeah, so we have a whole.
Would it be a dependency?
Yeah, we have a whole separate section of the code that deals with accessory structures to primary structure. So your primary structure would be your home, right? You can do the, the sheds and the other, a detached garage. And we have a separate section of the code that deals with how big that can be. And then, of course, within the setback. So that doesn't have anything to do with the density of the, it's, it's, it's an accessory use that you're allowed by right to have on every residential piece of property. You can have accessory uses, but it can't exceed twenty percent, I think. There is a, there's a percentage that it can't exceed the primary structure of. So we've had people come in with small houses and want to do enormous garages. And that's not, that's not allowed. But if I could maybe just backtrack a little bit and talk about maybe why some of the conversations that the Planning and Zoning Board members have is it's, it's mostly across the street. When you, when you go down, now, the lots across the street are much narrower, right? So those lots across the street are fifty, some of them are forty-two feet wide, sixty feet wide. You get a lot of, you get, you get the big office park across the street from it. There's some more general office in the area, there's a large church to the north. So they were looking at it in a vacuum of just the New Bern zoning. I'm just, whether that's right or wrong is, is, is up for y'all to decide. It's more of a snapshot of the area in general and that it wouldn't be out of character with the existing land use, the existing as-built essentially of the area. So that was kind of the reasoning there, but I totally understand where you're coming from. And, and in the New Bern side, in the strictly zoning side, that whole area is zoned, R twenty, R fifteen.
The reason I'm asking these questions is trying to be understanding of it. That, that area at one time was what we called no man's land. I lived in Old Town and it was not in the city and it was not in, in Trent Woods. It was in the county. And we actually had to have, if we needed security, it was the sheriff's. And we actually had to have, if we needed security, it was the sheriff's department, it wasn't City New Bern or Trent Woods. So, that area there, I think what happened is prior to some of it being in Trent Woods and some of it being in City New Bern, wasn't zoned at all, best I recall. And I think that probably what the city did when all that got sorted out and that came to the city, I think, R fifteen, because the size of lots and all is probably what it was designated as. And I don't think you may ask a lot of questions, because all them homes were already built there. So, the zoning really didn't matter, because everything was there, nothing was gonna change. It would've been grandfathered. So, now you got these couple vacant lots. And again, I'm just asking these questions, somebody might want to the public hearing.
I've got, I've got a question for you too.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you take, so if it's, the lot size now at point four or five, we're talking about, it's about twenty, twenty thousand square feet.
It's twenty thousand, yeah.
So, they can, can they do, divide the lot into two, two lots then? By going R ten, can they take?
R ten, no, because they wouldn't meet the minimum lot width.
So, fifty-seven and change?
It's sixty feet for R ten.
So, it has to be sixty feet wide to be, to be a separate lot?
Correct.
So, they couldn't divide it and sell off the property? So, the only reason to make it R ten would be just to maybe build a mother-in-law house or something?
No, well, you can do a duplex, or you can do townhomes. Now, townhomes.
But you can't do a house and a mother-in-law house next door?
No, not on one lot, no ma'am.
Not on one lot, okay. So, it has to be then, for somebody to want to do that, it has to be that they want to put townhomes or multiple houses?
Correct.
So, now, on that area with everything pretty much in harmony with single-family detached homes, we might be rezoning something that would allow duplexes instead of single-family on these remaining lots, is that?
That's correct. I think there's some attached across the street also, but again, yes.
And so, let's say hypothetically, whatever went there was not within the pleasure of the neighbors, and the adjoining vacant lots came up a year or two later, and they wanted to do the same thing, then we would've given the R ten to this one, it'd be kinda hard not give it to the next ones. So, that's the kinda concern that struggle on.
I think we should open the public hearing and let them, I think we might have some public here, though.
Yeah, go ahead, Alma.
Just, just a question, Jeff. Correct me if I'm wrong, are these rezonings when we have to mail out the notification to all the adjacent property owners? Do we do that even for those that are in Trent Woods?
I don't think we did.
So, if a property owner across the street that's in Trent Woods is well within that guideline of the circumference or radius or whatever, then we did not notify?
We're not required to, I'd have to check the file to see if we did it just to, just but there was.
Well, all that's multifamily settlement, why they be concerned by?
It's a different development across the street, different type.
I don't, you can't tell from the map how far that radius would go out, but.
Well, it's a hundred feet. So, you're looking at the front of that lot is a hundred and fifteen feet, right? So, the frontage is one fifteen, so it's really a lot on both sides.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all you would have to really notify, is what you're saying, just two people.
Okay, any other questions at this time? I'm gonna open a public hearing. Anybody like to come up, make any comments, questions, make, ask questions, make any statements, you're more welcome to do it at this time concerning this item.
Hi, my name is Brian McCracken. I own the lots that would be below that lot that's pictured. I know the owner who has purchased this lot. Their not only intent, but their desire is to split this lot in half, build a fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred square foot house to the high side of that picture, and have a lot available to build for their mother or their mother-in-law. It's not a she shed. If you have R ten, you would have, this lot has more than twenty thousand square feet, has twenty thousand, I'd have to look at the survey that I have, but I think it's twenty thousand one hundred and twenty. So, they, is that correct? Smidgen, so we have two legally R ten lots. There are duplexes across the street, across the street and to the right, but that's not going to be what comes to fruition. So, the intent is to, instead of building houses like this on a lot, you can build them like that. You have fifty-seven and a half square feet, and you could build a beautiful three to four bedroom home that could be thirty feet wide, and still, still maintain R ten setbacks. So, the, the, I don't, I don't feel that the impact of this as a developer, and I've been building homes since I was twenty-three, I'm fifty-seven now, would, I think it'd be a great contribution. And I don't think Country Club Road is, as a single-family lot that is a hundred and fifteen feet wide, I don't know if it could maintain, you know, a large home, four or five, six thousand square foot home, in the sense that in developing, I don't think it would be responsible land use or management. So, any questions?
Well, again, Jeff, I'm still confused about two R ten lots. Can, can he do that, yes or no?
Size-wise, but not width-wise, so the design options are.
So, he could not, what he's just described, he could not build, that's what.
Could not create two lots out of R ten. Could do townhomes, attached duplexes, can't have made two lots.
So, so Brian, do you understand what he's saying? That's what I'm, I want to be clear about.
I thought I'd had conversations with Seth and a brief with Jeff, but I don't understand. You're saying you couldn't build two single-family homes on that lot?
Correct, because your width won't be.
What do you mean eighty? What do you mean?
Eighty feet.
Eighty feet? So, you need eighty feet for frontage?
Yeah, can't hear, make sure you're talking into the microphone, they can't hear.
So, you need eighty feet for frontage?
Correct.
For each lot?
For each lot.
So, that may just present a problem. You know, I think that I, 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 well, I just wanted to clarify that.
There you go. At a different time. So, do we rescind this? Is the word you want to defer from that thing?
Yeah, why, why don't we table this? Table this, and let us go back to the drawing board. Yeah.
Yeah. Let us do this.
Talk to the mic.
Yes, ma'am. I think the applicant would be better served by the board closing this public hearing and then tabling your decision while staff resolves some issues with the applicant. And let us, let us see if we can creatively find a way to, to, to get to a result that makes some sense for everyone.
What's with, if we just don't take any action tonight?
That's basically what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Okay, well, another thing, we're in a public hearing, and I guess this is, there doesn't seem to be a lot of additional public comment, but to kinda help getting some questions answered, not this lot, but the next couple of lots, the elevations, what's the ground elevation over there?
Here, we're four and a half below flood.
Yeah, so, the reason I bring that up with AE, you've got eleven-foot elevation requirement minimal with our free board. So, if, I just think a lot of additional buildings being built where the safe harbor is keep at R fifteen. Whoever's gonna build these things, is he gonna be doing a lot of backfill, or you're gonna have a lot of buildings kinda sitting up high, they're gonna have to be sloped four to one, eight to one, whatever, to make them kinda look like they're not just standing out there a little atypically high. So, so I'm looking, you know, so again, these are the kinda questions, concerns, the safe harbor for the board is to, is to stay with R fifteen. I'm, I'm not sure that all of these questions got asked or concerns during the zoning meeting that could've maybe resolved this.
In the spirit of, of helping the applicant here, if there was a, a mechanism to propose a subdivision, a recombination of several of these lots that resulted in two ten thousand square foot lots, which would only be large enough for one single-family dwelling, you follow me? The concern now is if you have one twenty thousand square foot lot, it would allow for a triplex. The maximum structure could be not only a duplex, but a triplex, three townhomes on one lot. Ten thousand square feet for the first unit, five thousand for the ne, for the next two, right? So, twenty thousand square feet, three units, one lot.
Under R ten.
Right, in an R ten. That may be inconsistent with what you're imagining in that corridor. However, if the, if the owner wanted to consider coming back with two or three separate ten thousand square foot lots, so it would be a proposed subdivision with a proposed zoning change, then each of those lots could only hold one single-family unit, and you would be precluded from doing anything more. Because if the board is not interested in entertaining that, then we would put forth a lot of wasted effort.
Right. I would be concerned to have that triplex duplex. That would concern me in that neighborhood on that side of the street, because they are trying to build it up, and I think it's got value, more value to the neighbors around it if it stays singly, single-family versus multifamily.
That's what I was reading from you, actually. But if we had a solution, if the applicant had a solution that was simply two ten thousand square foot separate lots.
Right.
That complied with the code, would that be more palatable for a zoning change?
So, Scott.
And you can think about that, but if you, if you.
Well, I mean, that's a legal, that's a legal situation. This is a zoning, I mean.
Yes, sir.
We're, we're, you're, I think, trying to satisfy our concerns legally by some new development layout that, that precludes anything but a detached home.
Yes, sir.
And, and we're leaving the zoning arena, and we're now in the legal end of it, which we don't get into.
Well, what I'm trying to avoid is a lot of wasted efforts on, if the board's mindset is they would easier, more easily entertain a single-family solution, rather than a solution that, that could be multifamily, then the applicant can go back to staff and work on that solution, rather than doing that, come back to you, and you're still not happy, and you want the status quo.
Let me just say this about the unknown we're dealing with here. There's an unknown here. Mr. Odom, in the last year or two, has dealt with a zoning issue over in his area that all of his constituents were upset over, and truth was one thing we could do about it. The zoning was what it was.
Right.
But now, Mr. Odom and myself included, we're, have a lot of very disappointed neighbors if we had to change, change that zoning.
For sure.
Which we didn't do.
For sure.
Because it was already on the books.
Yes, sir.
So, this is kind of, yes, sir.
Scott, I'm, I'm trying to follow, I think, as always, you're trying to be helpful, and I appreciate that. What you're suggesting he can do is essentially go behind the scenes, fix some things, come back before us, but will we still not be asking to rezone to R ten?
You will be asking for a rezoning, which is why I'm trying to be helpful here.
Right.
But if he goes through staff and recombines these lots, and comes back with two or three ten thousand square foot lots, the only result you can get from an R ten rezoning is a single-family house on each of those lots. Because if you.
Not a duplex.
If you rezone a twenty thousand square foot lot right this minute tonight, the owner can change their mind in the morning and put a duplex or a triplex on that property.
I see what you're saying.
But if they, but if they, but if they come back with a package, if they come back with a package, there is no other option, it will only be a single family.
Well, so, to save us some time, with this one lot not having the frontage that is needed.
Right.
Is, is this gonna be where there's a twenty-foot easement through the front lot to get to the back lot, uh, twenty thou?
No, sir, the only way it's gonna work is if this gentleman adds land to that street front, recombines the lots, and I don't know if this is possible or not.
Yeah.
I, I'm just trying to, to be helpful.
Give him options.
If you don't, if, if the board likes R fifteen, vote and we, and we're done talking about it. If the board wants to consider a solution that only results in a single-family house on a lot, on an eighty-foot wide lot, then there may be a solution, or there may not, I don't know.
Well, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing, first step. I, I don't believe there's anybody else, so I make that motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion second, close the public hearing is a discussion. Seeing none, all favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Now, anybody wants to discuss your ward?
I'm lost, I'm gonna be honest with you.
Well, you know, at this point.
I, I mean, I think, I think we ought to do like the city attorney says.
I agree.
Let's just let him get back with staff, work out the details, and bring it back to us, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Do you need a motion? Do we need a motion to do that?
Do I?
I'll do whatever the attorney wants to do, but say it just died of lack of action.
Yeah. Well, if you simply intubated a motion to table this, and we can just leave it open to a later date, what will likely happen is, there's either gonna be a solution or not. And we'll know that by the next meeting. If there's a solution, then you can just end that, end this issue, and he'll come back through the process. If there's no other solution, then he can call the question, and you can vote up or down.
So, can we, can the motion be to table it to the next meeting, then we don't have to have another public hearing? All that's finished, it just comes back before us with new information?
That would be great.
So, I make a motion that we table item number sixteen until our next meeting in November.
Yes, ma'am.
Second. Motion second is a discussion. Seeing none, all favor the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Anything else on this item, sir?
Yes, sir, that's it.
Thank you. Let's go, item number seventeen.
Item number seventeen, Mayor, is a resolution to transfer properties to the Redevelopment Commission. Obviously, the board is well aware of this one. This is an item that the board has seen several times, it was tabled until this date after a question arose about the maintenance of the properties. At the Redevelopment Commission's meeting on the twenty-eighth of October twenty twenty, a motion was passed unanimously to seek a partnership with City of New Bern Public Works Department for it to continue maintaining the parcels that are to be transferred to the commission. The motion also included a desire for the Public Works to continue to assist with community cleanups. The commission also voted unanimously to recommend that the Board of Alderman petition the marshal, U.S. Marshal to amend and remove the restriction that's placed on the McCottar House property that's at nine oh eight Bloomfield Street. The commission would like to utilize this property to provide community health and wellness services, housing support services, educational resources. The board is asked to provide staff with the direction about what you would like for us to do with regards to contacting the U.S. Marshal's office on the McCottar House, as well as adopting a resolution to transfer these properties with the understanding that the city is going to continue to maintain and upkeep these properties throughout the process until the point to where the Redevelopment Commission finds a private owner for those lots. So, at this point, staff is seeking direction, will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Lord have a question.
Only thing is, I, you know, we talked about, and I brought back to the Redevelopment Commission at their last meeting, was about the maintenance of the lots. That was their concern, and they are asking that, of course, the city cut and maintain the lots. I believe you had brought that up, Alderman, best. So, they would ask for that, and then to be happy to receive the lots, and also too, they are ready to, you know, write that resolution about, they want the change for the McCottar House.
Well, I think it's a given that we should do the resolution.
Yeah, no doubt about that.
For McCottar. Alma.
Are, in, in this batch of properties that is in this procedure, are these all buildable lots or are these all of our lots?
They're all in the floodplain.
So, I, I just, I, I know we've talked about this a lot. My question is, if we're going to continue to maintain them, what is the purpose of us beading these to the redevelopment commission? Because I thought the purpose of what we were doing was to give them inventory to do things with.
I, I think there's a difference between, uh, as Ms. Ruggieri, uh, stated, in the flood zone versus whether or if not it can be developed. A property can be developed oftentimes. I mean, think about all the waterfront lots that we have in the city of New Bern. Um, many of the lots can be developed, um, if, if they don't, if they're not deed restricted. Some of these, I think, uh, I don't know, are we transferring?
There's some of the female lots are.
Some of the female lots are, but they may be as part of the redevelopment's plan to make stormwater retention areas, or it may be part of a greater, uh, mission to consolidate lots so that you have larger, uh, uh, basically, uh, bigger areas of massive lots put together so that you can actually redevelop that area in some way. It may be that those lots could be used for stormwater detention ponds for a larger development that might happen, uh, at a, at a later time. But eventually, um, it is the intent that even, it may, whether it's in a floodplain, you could build an elevated home on it potentially. Uh, doesn't mean that it can't be developed. So, uh, I'm happy to, uh, have, uh, Ms. Ruggieri or Mr. Davis, uh, elaborating further, but just because it's in a floodplain doesn't mean it can't be developed.
Yeah, and I'll fill in a little bit there. Again, this is a long-term redevelopment plan. And as the city manager stated, um, we can use these properties to leverage to, um, part of the redevelopment program in the floodplain is to accumulate a mass of lots in one place. So then maybe you have an acre of property that you can build up and maybe you can build on a quarter acre of it, right? Safely and out of the floodplain. So it's, it's in the toolbox. Are we going to start building tomorrow? No. Next year? Probably not. But at some point, we'll start to accumulate lots around these, we'll, we'll trade and do other things and hopefully get a critical mass. Um, the plan is to get a critical mass in these flood, uh, floodplain areas so we can build up out of the floodplain. So, um, it may be premature, but in the end of the day, it's still in the game plan.
And this is something the redevelopment commission can do that the city of New Bern can't do. We, we own in these properties and all, go and knock on the door to buy the property next door, whereas the redevelopment commission might very well do what you just said.
Having those conversations.
And I hope that would be part of their mission would be to go out and try to acquire additional properties to do just what you said.
Yep, we've been active for the last couple of months in that.
Yep.
So, so the marshal's office has been contacted in reference to the, no?
No, uh, the board had remanded, uh, I guess that back to the redevelopment commission for their consideration. That's what they have requested the board to consider now. They, they unanimously approved and requested the board to ask the marshal to transfer the property to them. So at this point, we need the direction and then we also, if the board wishes to transfer the properties to the redevelopment commission, that's what's before you tonight.
Alderman Bingle, this is pretty much yours.
Oh, I mean, we're all in this together because this is, this is our community and it's important. So I want to, um, make a motion, uh, two parts. First part is that the Board of Aldermen send a resolution to the US Marshals asking them, um, to be able to change the use of the McCotter House. And then part two of that is to, I make a motion to transfer the properties to the redevelopment commission with the city assisting in the maintenance of those properties.
Can we do that as one, prove that as one? Second.
Did you say that?
Yes, sir.
Is there further discussion?
Yes, I have a question. With, with, just say, with the McCotter Houses being a property that will be transferred, conveyed over to the redevelopment commission, and I know that you spoke previously about having it, they want it as a health facility. So you're saying that that's a property that's already owned, I'm saying hypothetically, already owned by the city, property that we don't have to purchase, we can't go in and take that property and make that a, uh, revenue property for the redevelopment commission? I know you said last time because of zoning, can, can that be rezoned because it is in a residential area?
When the city received that property, uh, through the federal actions, um, there was a deed restriction placed on that conveyance. The city that said it had to be a police substation. So it's a deed restriction, not a zoning issue. So private property is on the property itself. What we're requesting, um, with some vague language, but specific, I guess, in a certain sense, is that the US Marshals office add some uses to that restriction. Police substation, community service areas, uh, mental health facility, something, um, community centered, um, that serves the community a little broader than just a substation. So, um, that's the request from the, that was the conversation, that was the motion that the redevelopment commission made to y'all tonight to make that change specifically, to open up the, the, the allowable uses to be more of a community centered, um, cut type of use there. So it could be a health center, it could be something that serves the community beyond just a police substation.
Hey, is there any other discussion? We have a motion and second. Let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Des?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes. Motion carries, item number eighteen.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eighteen is a resolution approving additional streetlights on Old Airport Road. Uh, this section refers to the, uh, part of Old Airport Road that's between Tavanna and Evans Mill subdivisions that was required by the city in two thousand eighteen. The Public Works Department requested additional street lighting in this area. Uh, the Public Utilities Department has evaluated the area and determined that the current lighting does not meet the city's light standard and recommended, uh, the addition of thirty-one lights along this stretch of highway. The installation of the lights would cost twenty-three thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars and twelve cents. The monthly utility charge for the service, uh, to the Public Works Department will be added to our, our electric budget or within that department to pay for street lighting. Uh, that will be two hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-four cents per month. There's a memo that's included in your packet from Mr. Bichard, uh, and we're happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Board have questions?
No. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve additional street lighting for the Old Airport Road.
Motion and second, is there additional comments at this time? Let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Des?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris? Orderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, um, Mr. Stevens, do you want to do nineteen, twenty, twenty-one together or individually or what?
I think as long as the board is unanimous on all of them, then I, I imagine we can combine nineteen, twenty and twenty-one, which are all demolitions, uh, adjacent properties along Highway fifty-five West that was brought to the, the board's attention. Uh, the packet includes photographs of the properties, all of the, uh, actions, the minimum housing uh, that staff has taken with the properties, a chronological set of events. So, uh, they're here to answer any questions you may have. The board has them.
Okay. Does the board have questions?
There is one question that I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance for demolition of five sixty-one in C Highway fifty-five West, five sixty-three in C Highway fifty-five West, and five sixty-five in C Highway fifty-five West.
Second.
Motion second is a further discussion. Seeing none, have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw? Alderman Des?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes. Motion carries, item number twenty-two?
Uh, Mayor, item number twenty-two is, uh, ordinance amending the fee schedule. Uh, that's before you tonight. The fee schedule amendment was, uh, last adopted on the twenty-fifth of August, twenty twenty. Uh, as you recall, um, the board discussed overnight parking fees under section four that needed to be added, uh, for the after-hours parking from five-thirty PM to seven AM for the uses that were, uh, behind, um, or i- in the areas to facilitate, uh, the, uh, some of the restaurants and, and bars that are, uh, back behind, I would say, the, the, uh,
Chelsea.
Chelsea and some of those locations. Uh, additionally, uh, um, it reestablishes section eight, uh, which was, uh, uh, unfortunately omitted, uh, pertaining to the public assembly for parades and festivals. That was kind of caught, uh, by staff that was inadvertently admitted, uh, back in August that we left out. So Ms. Hogan's here to answer any questions you may have, but the main thing we wanted to capture was, uh, the after-hours parking that was, uh, recommended and approved by the board.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we adopt the budget ordinance, um, amen, oh, excuse me, uh, the ordinance amending the fee schedule.
Second. Motion and second is a discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Des?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number twenty-three?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number twenty-three is a budget ordinance amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty-one's operating budget. Uh, this budget ordinance amends the general fund by procreating twenty-five thousand dollars for the design of racetrack road. Um, it establishes also one million five hundred and three thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollar budget for the citywide radio project, which the board has, uh, previously approved. It also amends the grants fund by recognizing six thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars from the Department of Justice twenty twenty bulletproof vest partnership grant. Uh, this requires matching funds that were provided for in the budget, uh, that the police department set forth. Additionally, uh, it recognizes a twenty-five thousand dollar grant for the twenty twenty-one governor's highway safety program and a ten thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars, uh, from the Department of Justice twenty twenty Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant. Um, all of this is captured in a memo by Ms. Hogan. Happy to answer any questions.
Does the board have questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a budget ordinance amendment for the twenty twenty-one operating budget.
Second. Motion and second is a discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Des?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes. Motion carries, item number twenty-four?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number twenty-four is a discussion of the Streets Division's capital purchase of a twelve-inch, uh, brush chipper. Uh, the Public Works Department was approved in the FY twenty-one budget to, uh, in, in that purchase, um, I'm sorry, to purchase a flatbed pickup truck that was flooded during Hurricane Florence. This was a replacement vehicle. Uh, we've since learned that insurance was going to cover the replacement of this vehicle. Um, that vehicle has been replaced and it is requested by, uh, Public Works that fifty-eight thousand dollars that was budgeted for the truck to be utilized towards the purchase of a wood chipper that would help them, uh, with their, uh, operations day-to-day, uh, with regards to removal of trees and trimming. Um, this char, uh, this change, uh, will not have negative impact on the existing budget as it was once budgeted for, uh, previously for the flatbed truck. Actually, uh, there will be, uh, some of a, somewhat of a reduction of the, the expense necessary uh, to purchase the twelve-inch brush chipper at thirty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. So we want to bring this before the board. Anytime there's a change to the capital purchases within the departments, I'd like to get the board to approve that. So, um, requesting the board's, uh, consideration of this and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, um, your request is?
The request is, uh, for the Public Works Department to utilize funds that they were going to buy a flatbed truck with to purchase a twelve-inch brush chipper, to summarize.
Okay. Um, do have a question. Uh, you know, we always like to see some bidding and I know this is Vermeer and it's normally pretty good stuff that comes to chippers. And this is a corporate account pricing. Uh, so I take it that we only have one price in here that you feel comfortable that this is the, the price?
Happy to have Mr. Montaigne come up and, and answer that question for you, sir.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, prior to the, uh, the budget process, we actually got quotes for several different things. Um, but this particular one here, we did get one quote for it. Um, and it is well below what we have received verbally from other vendors. I can certainly get formal quotes from them if we need to, but at, at this time, this is the only one we actually have as formal, as a formal quote.
Okay. Well, just normally with Big John Equipment or Vermeer or whatever, typically you've got other dealers throughout the country and typically if you put it out there, you're going to get three or four prices for the same piece of equipment. Uh, again, this is having corporate account pricing, I assume that kind of, it's kind of like state.
State contracts.
Yeah, it's probably as good as you're going to get. Is that what you're telling me?
State contract, that's correct.
So this is very similar to that, right? Yes, sir.
May I just have a question? Is this a replacement of an existing chipper we have?
We, we do have an existing chipper now that was scheduled to be replaced next fiscal year. Uh, so basically what we've done is we bumped that up and we're actually getting one that's a little bit larger.
So you're going to go deal that one?
Excuse me?
The old one?
Uh, yeah, we'll dispose of it through GoDeals.
How old is it?
Darrell? I, I'd have to look that up.
Well, you, I don't know of a, anything that in a city, city employee, I'm more concerned about the health and safety of, than, than a wood chipper. And so, uh, I'm sure that one thing I do like about this is it's state-of-the-art safety measures on them because there's some bad examples of things that happen to people with wood chipper. So, um, um, I think you're good on that one. Um, any, anything else?
So, so you need a motion to approve this purchase? It says discussion.
Yeah, ultimately, what, what I'd like to get is authorization from the board for us to do this because any of the capital items typically are approved by the board in the budget process and this is something beyond the capital items.
It's kind of a financial wash anyway, right?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, it's actually going to be a little bit less.
So then, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the purchase of a, um, twelve-inch brush chipper for the Streets Division of the Public Works Department.
Second.
Second.
Motion and second is a discussion. Uh, seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Des?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, uh, Alderman Odom, appointments?
None tonight, sir.
Alderman Des?
None.
Um, Alderman Astor?
None tonight, sir.
Orderwoman Harris?
No, Mayor, not tonight.
Okay. Ald, Alderman Bingle?
None tonight, sir.
Okay, attorney's report?
Nothing for tonight, Mayor.
City manager's report?
I have nothing, sir.
Let's go to new business with, uh, Alderman Bingle.
Um, I really, I don't have, I don't have anything tonight, so.
What?
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, let's go to Orderwoman Harris.
It's been a long day.
New business, Orderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to, um, give my condolences to the Sampson family, um, there and my prayers in heart and that, um, whatever Ms. Des says under new business, I'm excited and can't wait. That's all, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Astor?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Okay, only new business, I, I would like to lift up, um, the chief again. That's, uh, you know, moving to New Bern sixty-eight, my god, my dad was in government. I've, I've seen a lot of things, but, um, the, the outpouring of support for you, chief, is, uh, is, is, uh, we're very proud for you and of you that, uh, that your clergy has spoken. And, uh, I can tell you again, like I said earlier, about Brother Johnny Sampson not knowing what to do with his passion. Um, some of the events that happened in the last six months, uh, the only thing I felt good about was I knew your relationship that you built for years with the, with the churches and all. And I, um, either through prayer or just the working relationship you had, I felt very comfortable with it. That we were going to be in good hands, so good job, buddy. Um, Alderman Des?
Yes. First and foremost, I just want to say congratulations to our president-elect and vice president-elect Biden and Harris, um, Alderman, uh, Bingle, Alderman Harris, and city clerk Brenda and myself. I feel so empowered right now as women, for the first time in history, get a chance, an opportunity to have the highest. opportunity to have the highest, second important position in this country. It is a, it is a great honor for us women because in the past, we were, we couldn't even vote, we couldn't even hold office. So I just think that, that is, I just feel so empowered right now. Um, secondly, um, we all have a flyer in front of us, um, that's this Saturday and I have to change the date, the location date because of the weather. Um, it will now be at the Omega Center and it starts from eleven to two. Um, this program, this event, I know, is going to help a lot of people here in this city. I know all of us here in this courtroom tonight know some, an individual or family that has been impacted, hurt because of COVID-nineteen through hunger, through homelessness. So this program, this event on Saturday, I mean, they're gonna be, it's sponsored through Combined Unified Services out of Fayetteville, North Carolina, um, with the, in collaboration with, um, Ephesus Seven Day Venice Church in New Bern, myself and Alderman Harris. They will be having food, personal hygiene items, clothes, new clothings, coats, jacket, household items, diapers, you name it. Please tell someone, share this information. Um, it's on the social media as well and I just want this event to be an awesome event for our citizens here in the city that has been affected by COVID-nineteen and also, um, other areas of unemployment as well. I had one other thing, um, can't remember right now, but it'll come to me. It's very important as well, but if it comes back to me, I'll bring it to your attention. But I just wanted to make sure, please, share this information with, um, individuals that you know here in this city. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Oden?
Um, yes, sir, Mayor, just one thing, um, I remember back seven or eight years ago, whenever I was first elected, um, we had our orientation, if you will, and we had a discussion with our attorney and there's certain things that you should always remember and one thing I remember from our attorney is he said, "Don't get involved with personnel issues. If the employee does not report to you as a board, don't get involved." Uh, with that being said, keep me in line, uh, Mr. Attorney, if I, if I step out here. Chief, I've, um, had the privilege of managing, uh, several folks for many years and this year I've experienced two retirements already. And, um, in speaking with those individuals, they've all been very upfront and honest and said, "You know when you know." And, um, having taken those phone calls and, um, trying to talk them out of what they have decided to do, um, I'm, I'm O for two this year. So, um, I don't know if that means anything or not, but, um, I know that that decision did not come lightly with you and, uh, you've been doing this a long time. How long? I just want to bring that up cause it's longer than I've been born. I just want to throw that out there. Uh, I know that, that you certainly, um, have a stellar reputation as was evidenced tonight and, um, from my, my perspective, I wish you the best in whatever it is you choose to do in the future and thank you for your service in the city of New Bern. That's all, Mayor.
Alderman Bingle?
Yeah, I did, I had my notes and I didn't even look at them. So I just wanted to let the, um, the board know and, and join, join along with me if you'd like to, but it seems lately the number one issue that comes to my attention that I have no control over, I can do nothing about is Suddenlink. I think we all as a board get Suddenlink complaints on a regular basis. I'm called, I'm stopped on the street, I'm Facebook messages, uh, and so I, I just feel like, uh, we need to bring minds together. What are our other options? What are there other alternatives? Are there any? Riverbend has these issues, Fairfield Harbor is having these issues, Trent Woods. So I'd like to maybe put together a town hall with, uh, talking to Riverbend, some others and come together and maybe have some people discuss, you know? Can we talk to Google and get Google fiber in here or do something else? Just something for our citizens because this is crazy. People are trying to do business from their homes, you know, the schools trying to, you know, educate our children. So many issues we're having now and, and Suddenlink has been difficult at best for us to work with. We have no location here in New Bern for people to return their boxes. It's just a mess. It really is a mess. So, um, if the board doesn't have any major objections, I would like to, if it's okay, reach out to potentially, uh, Riverbend, Fairfield Harbor, uh, Homeowners Association, whatever, and see what we can do in pulling together. I don't want to make a formalized committee where we appoint anybody, but I would like to gather individuals together to see if we could think outside the box. Does anybody have an issue with that?
Alderman Bingle, um, I wanted to add to that, that frustration, um, and also to put out there, maybe it's possible we can look into what the cost would be for fiber options to be laid down throughout the city in all these other locations or something like that. That might be another option.
Right, totally agree. Well, that's what I'd like to do, gather the minds together and see what other alternatives we might have.
Well, you know, there is another alternative. Century Link is offering a, a, you know, this, the internet service and as a matter of fact, in my community, I'm sure, I, I'm, I'm surprised that, that Suddenlink had it down trying to figure out what's going on because they're adding Century Link in and doing away with Suddenlink just as hard as they can. They just hooked my neighbor's house up today to Century Link. So I, I don't know anything about their service. I know that there's a lot of people that is in my neighborhood that is changing over and going to Century Link.
I want our citizens to know that while we don't officially have the capacity to do anything about it, it's not our decision that Suddenlink is here, that we are trying to look at this issue and do something about it. I think it's important enough that we do this.
Thank you for bringing that up. You know, we discussed it and I forgot all about mentioning it.
Yeah.
Okay, Alderman Des, has it come around yet?
No. Blaming on my mind.
Okay.
But I do want to say, um, um, to the chief, um, it is real evident that the community, faith-based community and the residents of the community, um, want you to stay around for another year and, um, I think it would be a great idea if that's, if you feel that that's something that you really want to do, huh? No answer?
Putting him on the spot.
I'm putting you on the spot, chief.
I'm not.
Okay, anything else to come for the board? We need a closed session tonight.
Yes, sir, still?